Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I advise that Councillor Adams and Murphy will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Gidney that Councillor Adams and Councillor Murphy be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,775th meeting held on Tuesday, the 2nd of September, 2025, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Gidney that the minutes of the 4,775th meeting of council held on the 2nd of September, 2025, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. I would now like to call on Ms Jackie Gillespie and Ms Anne Mountney, who will address the chamber on Stepping Stone North. Welcome, ladies. You can begin when you're ready, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Lord Mayor, and councillors, my name is Jackie.
And my name is Anne.
And we're here to talk to you about Stepping Stone Clubhouse. We are a community mental health organisation. One in four people in Australia experience mental ill health at some point throughout their life. People may already have clinical supports, such as psychologists, psychiatrists, councillors, or hospital care, but recovery doesn't happen in isolation. That's where we come in. Think of us as a stepping stone available that helps rebuild confidence, routine, and purpose. The clubhouse model is a worldwide movement, where members participate in the work order day, which involves running the actual clubhouse side by side as members and staff work together. Through participation, members are given the opportunity to rejoin or extend their worlds of friendship, family, important work, employment, and education. During the work order day, members build their confidence, stamina, and learn real-life work skills in a supportive environment. Tasks such as reception, administration, social media, vehicle maintenance are all included in our clerical units, and menu planning, grocery shopping, budgeting, preparing a nutritious hot meal each day are all part of the fun in our hospitality units. So Anne, who is a member of Stepping Stone North since late 2024, would love to share her experience with you today.
Going to Stepping Stone North has been a transformative experience for me. It's not only boosted my confidence, but has significantly improved my social skills and overall wellbeing, giving me a renewed sense of purpose and hope. My mental health has stabilised, and I am now able to go out more, which is a major milestone for me. Even on the days when I'm at home, I feel more active and productive, which has been a huge change. One of my greatest achievements is being able to go to the shops again, something I hadn't done in over three years. But since joining Stepping Stone North, I've been able to visit multiple times, and it's made a profound difference in my life. My family has noticed these positive changes, and they are incredibly grateful. Knowing that my husband and teenagers are proud of me means everything to me. Their support and encouragement has been invaluable, and I can't thank the team at Stepping Stone North enough for their care and guidance. We have two clubhouses, one at Cooperoo, who are the OGs and celebrated their 31st birthday last week, and who are open 365 days a year, then head north across the river for Stepping Stone North at Cherside, that opened in March 2024, and it opens five days a week plus public holidays. We opened Christmas Day last year thanks to the Lord Mayor's charitable trust. Becoming a member is simple. No referral is needed. You need to be 18 years or older, and you can pop into either clubhouse for a tour between Monday and Friday.
A recent evaluation... Awesome.
A recent evaluation of our programme and services demonstrated less visits to hospital for members' mental health after only three to six months, as well as significantly higher recovery, social connectedness, and quality of life, all of which is significant not only to our members' lives, but to the healthcare system and the wider community. The evaluation also found that existing members were three times less likely to be unemployed than brand-new members. Every member interviewed as part of the evaluation was able to share some way in which Stepping Stone had improved their lives. For some, it was life-changing; others, it was life-saving. Subsequently, we've also started to examine members' experience of suicidal thoughts, and the recent findings revealed that existing members experienced significantly greater control over suicidal thoughts. So you'll find us over at the Queen's Street Mall tomorrow for World Suicide Prevention Day.
A dream of Stepping Stone North for over a decade and supported by funding via Queensland Health, Stepping Stone North in Cherside started in February 2024 with just 12 existing members from our sister clubhouse. By official opening in July 2024, we had 40 members, and as of today, we now have 127 members. We are rapidly outgrowing our beautiful little council clubhouse building in Seventh Brigade Park and have ambitious plans to renovate. We are currently going through the approval process with Councillor Parry and the March at Ward team. We have upgraded our security and started the design stage of our renovations, all thanks to Brisbane City Council grants.
So Stepping Stone in Cooperoo currently have close to 3,800 registered members - we'll get there too - and have made a huge impact to their community for over 30 years. They are a clubhouse international training base, the only one in the southern hemisphere, and have provided training to many of the other 380 or so clubhouses from around the world in this life-changing model. So we're really proud of the impact we've made, but we know we can do more. With your support, we can. We would like to extend the invitation for a tour and a famous clubhouse lunch at either of our clubhouses to all of you, so please come in and say hello. And together, we can ensure that every person living with mental ill health has access to our clubhouses invaluable stepping stone on their journey to recovery.
Thank you, Anne and Jackie. I'm going to call upon Councillor Howard now to respond.
Well, it's not often that we have a double act, but Jackie and Anne, thank you. And Anne, thank you so much for sharing your story. It really does mean a lot to all of the councillors in the chamber to hear the lived experience. And Jackie, thank you for providing us with those wonderful stats. That's quite amazing. And I know that Councillor Parry has been singing your praises to me all day, and so I know the amazing work that you are doing at Cherside. And it's already, like, Cooperoo was such a raging success, and so I'm sure that the deputy mayor, Councillor Cunningham, is also very proud of the work that's being done there. But everyone in this chamber knows the importance of supporting the work that you do, and we are absolutely thrilled that we're being able to help you in some small way. So it really is a fantastic thing to think that you have these hubs that people know that they can be supported, and I think it's that support which comes in so many different ways, which is just so important for everyone to understand how needy we are for those hubs in the areas. And I've just been observing, since moving to Seventh Brigade Park, your community has grown so quickly. So that growth speaks volumes. And of course, we were very glad to be able to help with a grant from the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Programme to help with planning and design work for the new weatherproof dining and meeting spaces. And it's an important step for your clubhouse, and so these improvements will actually mean more for people coming from this amazing support of Stepping Stone, so thank you. And of course, real change takes teamwork, and we can see that here today, and we encourage all levels of government to get behind Stepping Stone North. Your story is a great reminder of why we need to keep investing in inclusive, welcoming spaces across Brisbane, and we want to thank you again for your passion for building a stronger, kinder community in Cherside and, of course, in Cooperoo. But right across Brisbane, because we know that people from all across Brisbane will attend those hubs, and I just want to say to both of you, thank you so much for coming in today and sharing your story. I'd also welcome the opportunity to meet with you personally and to see how we can continue to help and continue the conversation that we're having, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Howard, and thank you to Jackie and Anne for coming in. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can you please update the chamber on how the Shrima Council is working to activate the Brisbane River and support our tourism and hospitality industries in the lead-up to the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games?
Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councillor Dixon, for the question. I know that your part of the city also benefits from being alongside the Brisbane River, and it's such an asset for the wider community. It's a shared asset that we have and one that people love to interact with, whether it's getting out for Riverfire, for other events in the Brisbane Festival, whether it's simply going for a walk along the Riverwalk, whether it's maybe jumping on board, a jet ski, or a goboat, or another opportunity like that, or having a meal at the Prawnster. These are opportunities that we have in Brisbane, but we know that we can have so many more. Now, as councillors would be aware, we invested in building a number of River Hub pontoons a number of years ago, and these have been for effectively recreational and short-term use by the community. And they're getting hundreds and hundreds of bookings coming through, and, you know, it's great to see the use, but we believe that there can be even more use and better use and activation of these assets. They were created for the community to enjoy, and just like, you know, many years ago, council made the decision to allow activation on footpaths and allowing footpath dining to be held in parts of Brisbane across the city, we see the opportunity to have further activation of these river hubs as well. And so what I'm confirming today is that we will update council's policy to allow commercial activation of river hubs. We know that there is demand for this. We know that that demand is from not only the operators that have tourism opportunities to create, but it's from the community. People want to use these facilities. Now, we've seen some examples in the past where river-based operators have, as a result of decisions made at other levels of government, been shunted between different locations in the Brisbane River. There were a lot of activations that were held down in front of Queens Wharf, and there used to be the jetties down there that a lot of operators operated from. And then with the Queens Wharf project, a lot of those operators moved to different parts of the river. Some of them ended up at Dockside, and obviously there was an issue with that. And so we've provided a home for a couple of those operators on our Botanic Gardens River Hub, but we also need to update our council policy to allow this to happen on an ongoing basis. So they're on a temporary basis at the moment, but we'd like to allow them and other operators to have proposals put forward for our river hubs up and down the river. Now, we have some great locations that can be activated. There's obviously one at the New Farm Powerhouse that can be activated. We know there's one at West End that can be activated. There's at least eight different hubs and pontoons across the Brisbane River. It will require a change in council policy. It will also require an amendment to the wet lease that we have with the state government, but I think this is a good thing to do, and I also think it's consistent with the state government's tourism plan that they just released. We know that when it comes to creating water see and do in Brisbane, the river is going to be critical in that, and so this could potentially allow water taxis to operate in Brisbane, and that's something that's been explored in the past. Previously, the water taxi operators have wanted to use the ferry terminals, but those ferry terminals are already very busy with city cats coming on a regular basis and kitty cats coming on a regular basis. And so this provides an opportunity to potentially have water taxis in Brisbane, something we should explore. It also provides an opportunity for some of the operators that you might know, like GoBoat. At the moment, GoBoat, they're based down on a private pontoon out the front of the Breakfast Creek Hotel, and they get great use, but there's also demand potentially for operations like that to be closer to the city, and so this is an opportunity that we want to explore. So I would certainly commend this policy change to all councillors for consideration. Obviously, we'll be moving through the steps necessary to make this policy change, but it's something I think that will be good for Brisbane. It will help, as I said, create more to see and do, and also it will be consistent with the state government's own tourism strategy that was recently released as well. So this is something exciting. It's another thing that we can do to provide an amazing experience for people that come to Brisbane, and also jobs for people who live and work in Brisbane as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week, Gold Coast Mayor Tom Tate said Brisbane City has unsustainable debt levels, is cutting its capital programme, and can't even maintain the Story Bridge. So of course Adrian has his hand out. We have over 200 bridges down here, and they're all in A1 condition. Get your own house in order, Lord Mayor. So, Lord Mayor, are you embarrassed that even neighbouring councils are calling out your neglect of the Story Bridge?
Lord Mayor.
No, not at all, not at all. And, and look, we know that there's always someone with their hand out, and that someone represents the second-largest council in South, in Queensland. And look, you know, this is what mayors who advocate for their community do. They advocate for their fair share of funding and support from other levels of government, because we know that local government collects 3% of all taxation received in this country. And so if things are to happen, infrastructure is to be invested in, it always happens better and faster when it's done in partnership with other levels of government. Now, obviously, there'd be no coincidence in the timing of those comments with the cancellation of a certain over-budget light rail project on the Gold Coast, and there'd be no coincidence that I have openly suggested that Brisbane Metro would be a good solution for that. And so to have those kind of comments coming from the mayor of the Gold Coast is absolutely to be expected, given the situation that he was facing. Now, I think what that does, though, the situation down on the Gold Coast shows, that light rail is simply not feasible for South East Queensland. It's simply not. To have an extension that is going to cost as much as $10 billion, which could be done far more cost-effectively with bus rapid transit using a Brisbane Metro-style solution, you know, this is the reality of what we're seeing. If we want better transport delivered, the Brisbane Metro bus rapid transit solution is the right one, and it can be delivered in a far more cost-effective manner than light rail or heavy rail. Now, another example is Cross River Rail. Like, Cross River Rail was supposed to be open now. It was supposed to be operating, and nobody knows when it will actually be operating. You know, it's one of those projects that was so badly mismanaged by the former Labor Government and is so far over budget that it's eye-watering. And as much as Labor councillors like to have a crack at Brisbane Metro, you know, you know what? The entire metro project could have been funded many times over by the overrun costs on Brisbane Cross River Rail project. And so the, the reality is, what these two projects show is that heavy rail and light rail are costing so much more these days, they are taking so much longer these days, and if we want mass rapid transit for South East Queensland, then the Brisbane Metro bus rapid transit model is a good one to be used elsewhere. And just like it was used, it's being used now in the Sunshine Coast with the wave, you know, this, this is a good opportunity for the Gold Coast, because I support Mayor Tom Tate's aspiration to have better transport. I support it, and he's right in advocating for his city. But in the reality, the Brisbane Metro option is a really good one and will deliver great outcomes for the Gold Coast. And so, Councillor Cassidy, you can try and play politics all you want, but it'd be nice to see you finally get on board with Brisbane Metro, because everyone else is. Everyone else is.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy. Do not, do not call out while someone else is speaking. You've asked a question. Got any further issues, you can bring it up in general business. Lord Mayor.
And, and we hear Councillor Cassidy talking down Riverfire and what a great success Riverfire was, and the incredible effort of the teams from Brisbane Transport or Transport for Brisbane, who were asked by Translink to provide 600 extra services and provided 600 extra services, a fantastic outcome. Now, obviously, Translink now know in hindsight they should have provided more services, but obviously we provided what they asked for, and it was a fantastic outcome. We have never seen more people come to Riverfire than we saw this weekend. People loved it, people wanted to come out. This is what we love seeing for Brisbane, and it was a fantastic outcome to see our city so active, to see so many people out enjoying the best of what Brisbane has to offer, and people coming not only from Brisbane but all across South East Queensland as well, a fantastic outcome. And so Councillor Cassidy can try and talk down Brisbane, can try and talk down Metro, all he likes, but it is a sad indictment on his lack of vision.
Further questions? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is to the acting chair of the Infrastructure Committee, Councillor Parry. Councillor Parry, the Shrima Council has invested record funding in maintaining our iconic Story Bridge, and we know that residents are excited to see this key connection reopen to pedestrian and cyclists. Can you please update the chamber on the status of the Story Bridge footpaths?
One moment, please, Councillor Parry. Caution you, Councillor Strong. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank Councillor Toomey for the question. The Shrima Council is committed to restoring the Story Bridge. Built 85 years ago, the Story Bridge is an iconic landmark of our city. It's emblematic not just of Brisbane, but of the great state of Queensland. Our residents love the Story Bridge, and it's important that we explain why these restoration works are necessary. We're investing in our bridge, and we need people to understand why. Bridges have lifespans, Madam Chair. This is an 85-year-old asset. It's an asset that was designed to last 100 years. Restoring the Story Bridge now means that we can extend its operational life and ensure that it can be enjoyed for generations to come. The footpaths on the Story Bridge, which are used by cyclists and pedestrians for their daily commute, are ageing. The latest expert engineering advice found footpaths should be replaced in the next two to five years. Earlier this year, out of an abundance of caution, we made the decision to replace the footpaths now. We know that this decision has impacted cyclists and pedestrians, and we thank them for their patience whilst we have undertaken this important project. Our crews have been working tirelessly so that we can open the new footpaths. Using locally sourced steel, this new support frame will hold the strong lightweight decking to replace the ageing footpaths. Madam Chair, this frame was installed in August. Already, more than half of the custom-made decking panels on the first side have been fitted. Because of the incredible work of our council crews, we're on track to reopen the city side of the footpath even earlier than expected. We're getting on with the job. We're installing the replacement paths, and we're keeping Brisbane moving. The city side footpath will reopen later this year with the eastern path to follow. More than 150 of the 300 metres of new footpath on the first side has already been laid. This almost $7 million investment to install new decking is powering ahead. Brisbane is a river city, and it's our bridges that connect us. Our council supports and champions active and healthy lifestyles. We're eager to get these footpaths reopened so that our residents and our visitors can use them. We want to see pedestrians and cyclists back on the Story Bridge and enjoying one of the best views of the Brisbane River. Madam Chair, this is just one small part of our investment in the Story Bridge thus far. Since 2019, the Shrima Council has invested nearly $80 million in the Story Bridge. It's $80 million. What we're embarking on now is the long-term restoration of the bridge. In October 2024, the Lord Mayor assembled the Story Bridge Restoration Committee. This committee is filled with industry experts in heritage infrastructure, asset management, and finance. It includes professionals with specialist skills in property and major infrastructure projects. The committee chair, Nigel Shamia AM, served as chair of the highly acclaimed $215 million restoration of Brisbane City Hall. It includes Peter Burton, who was involved in designing the marine infrastructure at Howard Smith Wharves, the New Farm Riverwalk replacement, and other significant active transport bridges across the Brisbane River. It has senior public servants such as John Hardwick, who is accountable for the $211 billion Transport for New South Wales asset portfolio, which includes the Sydney Harbour Bridge, facing similar issues to the Story Bridge. It also has the highly accomplished chartered accountant that is Graham McHugh, who has extensive business expertise gained through senior executive roles in Australia and abroad. Together, these industry experts crafted the Story Bridge Restoration Committee report. This document outlines a clear pathway forward for preserving this national icon, and over the next 15 years, council will restore the Story Bridge. We will do this by working collaboratively with the state and federal governments. We will do this the responsible way, with a plan in hand. We will not be doing it the labor way and asking them to sign a blank cheque. Already, the federal government has come to the party on the business case. The $5 million Story Bridge business case is jointly funded by council and the federal government. The business case will be completed next year, and it will outline a stage plan to restore the Story Bridge. We've spoken a lot about the Story Bridge this year, Madam Chair. It's been disappointing to hear the misinformation on imaginary tolls from those opposite. What's worse is to see them and their state Labor counterparts deliberately spread this throughout our community for their own cheap political point scoring. Thankfully, Brisbane residents see through it. Labor might be focused on political games, but we're just getting on with the job. This council is committed to restoring the Story Bridge. We're working hard to reopen the footpaths and get cyclists and pedestrians back on it. We're investing in this asset so that it continues to support our city for decades to come. We're restoring the Story Bridge, and we're keeping Brisbane moving.
Further questions? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, my question is to the planning chair, Councillor Allen. In what year was the last neighbourhood plan started by Brisbane City Council? And has this planning process now been replaced by the more recent suburban renewal precinct programme?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councillor Johnston for the question. Now, in terms of the last neighbourhood planning process, it was probably the Nathan Salisbury-Maruka Neighbourhood Plan, which was finalised in recent times. It started initially, I think, in 2020, so that's the, the last time that we started a significant neighbourhood plan. The, in recent years, the ones that have been completed prior to Nathan Salisbury-Maruka were neighbourhood plans such as the Sandgate Neighbourhood Plan. Now, it's no mystery, the preference of this administration at present is to look at city plan changes via the suburban renewal precincts mechanism. The reason that we've chosen to go down that path is that our city has grown rapidly, it's changed rapidly. The neighbourhood planning process isn't as quick and agile as we would like it to be. It doesn't respond as quickly to the challenges we're facing as a city. And accordingly, we've, in conjunction with the state government, have decided that suburban renewal precincts is a more effective way to go about bringing on additional housing in the city. In particular, we work with the state through a mechanism called the Section 18 Process, which is part of the State Planning Act. That allows us to run some of the normal steps that occur through a neighbourhood planning process in conjunction with each other, so rather than processes being consecutive, they can be run in a, well, in a side-by-side. Things such as the state interest... Things such as the state interest review and community consultation, we can do those in parallel. And the net effect of this is that it saves a lot of time. And more importantly, too, the suburban renewal precinct programme is focused on smaller areas. They're not as wide. The neighbourhood planning process typically took into consideration up to three suburbs, sometimes more. Suburban renewal precincts tend to focus purely on one suburb, a very focused target area. They focus on locations that have good high-frequency public transport and some good sport, recreation and community amenity. So we're looking at locations that present as an immediate opportunity where we can look to turn around one of these plans within 12 to 18 months. The Stones Corner Suburban Renewal Precinct was our first suburban renewal precinct. That's the one, I guess, that we've used to tease through the process to better understand how the process works. That particular suburban renewal precinct is coming to an end and will shortly be adopted into city plan. That process from start to finish was less than 18 months by the time we eventually land that. We've got a number of other ones currently on the runway, including Winham Central, Mount Gravatt and most recently Alderley. And so those ones will also go through that process, and we're very hopeful that we will land those within the next 12 months. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions, councillor Mark.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment Parks Sustainability Committee councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the weather is getting warmer, which means storm season is just around the corner. Can you please update the chamber on how we are helping residents to be prepared for the coming months?
Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and through you, thank councillor Marks for the question. I know that councillor Marks is always keen that her residents have the information that they need in preparing for storm season in order to be completely ready. And I know you have a particular interest, through you, Madam Chair, councillor Marks, in your former role as City Standards Chair. Madam Chair, as the warmer weather arrives at this point, and at this point every year, we are actively preparing for the coming storm season to ensure our residents are safe, confident and ready. And once again, we are preparing for a season that is likely to be both hotter and wetter than the average. The latest forecasts from the Bureau of Meteorology indicate a likelihood of above median rainfall across Queensland this spring, with unusually high rainfall possible in many areas. This means there'll be a heightened risk of flooding, particularly in southern Queensland, where catchments are already saturated and dam levels are ready or nearing capacity. We continue to take a multi-layered approach to storm season preparedness, focusing on key things like community engagement and education, operational capability, sandbag distribution and waste management. Community engagement remains a cornerstone of our preparedness strategy. We continue to prioritise education and outreach to ensure residents are informed and empowered. The Emergency Services Expo 2025, which is scheduled for the 11th of October and will be held at the Mount Gravatt Showgrounds, will feature over 35 disaster and emergency-related stall holders, as well as food vendors catering for all of the family, and entertainment featuring Paw Patrol and Bluey. This event is a valuable opportunity for residents to learn about emergency preparedness, and each year it gets bigger and better, and it's a really fun day especially for the kids. So we encourage our residents during the year, and especially at this time in a chair, to access our suite of preparedness resources. These include registering for the Brisbane Severe Weather Alert System, familiarising themselves with the emergency dashboard that has real-time flood camera updates, bushfire and smoke protection advice, air quality monitoring, and we also encourage them to take account of hot weather health and safety tips that are on there. Our Be Prepared video series is also available online to guide residents through practical steps they can take to safeguard their homes and their families. All of these resources are designed to ensure that Brisbane residents have the information and tools they need to stay safe during storm season. Madam Chair, our waste management systems are also ready to respond to severe weather events. Assessments are underway on the suitability of 17 potential sites that have been identified for temporary green waste disposal. And of course, our resource recovery centres can extend their operating hours as required. We have regular meetings with our waste processing contractors to make sure that they are prepared and ready. In addition to general waste, council has developed a robust food waste management plan to support residents during storm-related disruptions. Madam Chair, when the power goes off and the fridge and freezer go down, the food waste starts to mount up. So the WARS team has identified 193 potential locations across Brisbane where temporary food waste bins can be deployed. But as well as preparing for weather events, we're also supporting residents in their own preparations for the season. We have free green waste drop-off weekends coming up through the spring months to help residents prepare their gardens. On the weekends of the 13th and 14th of September, the 11th and 12th of October, and the 1st and 2nd of November, residents can dispose of household garden waste for free at our four resource recovery centres at Chandler, Fernigrove, Nudgee Beach and Willawong. And of course, Madam Chair, far more residents have access to green bins now than they ever did this time last year. 47,000 green bins have been rolled out already across the city, with the delivery programme now almost a third of the way being complete. As residents trim and tidy up in preparation for wild weather, everything that doesn't fit in their green bin can be brought to the RRCs. Tidying up your garden before the summer has never been easier. Madam Chair, sandbag availability is another critical component of our storm response. We're maintaining a stockpile of over 100,000 sandbanks across our five depots, and this will be increased to over 150,000 as the season begins. This is an important resource as we help residents to protect their properties during heavy rainfall and potential flooding. We are well-prepared for the upcoming season, Madam Chair, through planning and working with our residents through education.
Councillor Davis, your term has expired. Further questions? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. This year, you've kicked rough sleepers out of parks, knowing there isn't enough housing with little to no notice. You're kicking a community motorcycle club with 400-plus members out of their site without providing alternative. Now we hear about Jet Ski Tours Brisbane, who have been told they can no longer operate on the Brisbane River because council hasn't provided enough commercial options on the river since the floods. Why are you kicking people out without meeting with them and working with them to find a suitable solution first?
Lord Mayor.
Does councillor Kim pay any attention in council at all? Are they capable of adapting their political strategy? It is extraordinary that we have just heard this question.
Councillor Cassidy. Caution you.
When this was the topic of my very first question.
One moment, please. One moment, please, Lord Mayor. First of all, councillor Cassidy, I caution you, I've already spoken to you already about calling out while someone else is on their feet. Councillor Kim, did you have a point of order?
Yes, it was on relevance. My question was if the Lord Mayor has met with the group and has consulted with them.
Thank you.
The Lord Mayor has not addressed that component of this question.
He has five minutes to address it. And councillor Cassidy, if you have comments to make, do it in GB. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, I've commented many times over that what's said in this chamber, the opposition doesn't seem to listen to any of it. They keep repeating political lines, they keep repeating untruths, they keep misrepresenting the facts, yet they don't listen to anything that is actually said.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Strunk.
The Lord Mayor is debating the question instead of answering it?
Councillor Strunk, I just made the point that he has five minutes in which to address the question. So if you're going to say the same point of order councillor Kim, please don't. Councillor Strunk, point of order.
I think the meeting local law says that you're not supposed to debate the question. You're supposed to answer it, and I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Councillor Strunk, I don't uphold that point of order, councillors. The Lord Mayor is addressing the question, and he has five minutes to do so. Lord Mayor.
Just regarding my previous point of order.
Councillor.
It was on relevance. My question was, is he working with them to find a suitable solution first?
Thank you, councillor. We've already heard your question, don't keep asking it. That's not what your point of order should be.
Oh my goodness, this is so embarrassing for Labor. And councillor Kim, it is extraordinary. I actually dealt with this exact issue in my very first question. Now, if you want to talk councillor Kim through you, Madam Chair, about getting kicked out, why don't you actually admit that it was the Labor state government that kicked these exact operators out of Dockside?
That's right.
The Labor state government kicked them out. We have since given them a home. As I said earlier, we are going to update our policy to allow that home to be a more permanent home. Listen councillor Kim, through you, Madam Chair, this is so embarrassing. Like, wow. Extraordinary. Absolutely extraordinary.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Can you bring the Lord Mayor back to the question, whether he's met this business? It was a very specific question, instead of bullying councillor Kim for asking a question.
Councillor, just because...
For asking a legitimate question.
And the Lord Mayor is addressing it, just because you don't like the answer doesn't mean that you can call a point of order. Lord Mayor.
It is very clear that we've been dealing with these operators since the Dockside days, which is why we provided them a place to go. And so it is really just an example that the facts mean nothing, the reality means nothing to Labor, the truth means nothing to Labor. They'll try and put a spin on anything, but then when they ask a question, they never actually listen to the answer. They never want to hear the answer, they just want to interrupt during the answer. And then they'll ask you the same question that has already been answered. How many times have I been asked about a toll? How many times have I answered that question? How many times do they keep asking about a toll? It is quite extraordinary that this was their question. And so we will continue working with those operators, as I said earlier, to make sure that there are options for them and other operators, because it's good for Brisbane and because we want to see the river activated. And so it is really disappointing that the opposition wants to try and play politics with an issue they clearly don't know about. Another own goal where the Labor government kicked these operators out of Dockside, we found a home for them, but somehow we're the bad guys? It's extraordinary. It's extraordinary. And so, look, this is a business that we've been, or two businesses that we've been working with for some time now, and we'll continue working with them. And as I said, there's opportunities for other businesses as well, because it's good for Brisbane, we want to see river activation, we want to see those river hubs activated and used by people.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, Chair, you said we had to sit here and listen to the Lord Mayor answer the question, which we've now been doing for many minutes. But the question was very specific. Has the Lord Mayor met with that business?
Councillor.
He hasn't answered that.
I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
So, as I said, we've been working with these businesses since the Dockside days. And the Dockside days, I don't know, someone can jog my memory here, more than 12 months ago this has been going on, maybe even longer than that, maybe a couple of years, maybe three years? And, yeah, I mean councillor Hutton is reminding me, it's probably 2021. And you know what? The Labor Party has only just worked out about this issue now. How out of touch can you get, Madam Chair? This has been going on for years, we've been helping these businesses for years, and they've only just worked it out. It's quite extraordinary. And so we'll continue to support these businesses and others, and we'll continue to get a good outcome for the community to make sure that there's an opportunity for them to have an ongoing arrangement at our river hubs, rather than the short-term arrangement that they've got at the moment.
Further questions, councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of Public Transport Committee councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrinna Council is keeping Brisbane moving in record numbers with the Brisbane Metro. I understand that the Brisbane Metro project has recently been recognised for its leading design in infrastructure. Can you please update the chamber on what the Shrinna Council has achieved and where we might see the metro rolling out next?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and in particular, thanks to councillor Wolf for her ongoing commitment to the Brisbane Metro. And I know that her residents and people who work in her community stand to be one of the principal beneficiaries of the Brisbane Metro. Now, not only is the Brisbane Metro a leading example of this council's commitment to keeping Brisbane moving, it's also a leading example of our commitment to environmental sustainability. The Infrastructure Sustainability Council has recently recognised the metro as a nation-leading project. Now, they use an interesting scoring system, where a score of 25 to 49 is commended, a score of 50 to 74 is excellent, and a score 75 to 100 is deemed to be leading. And the Brisbane Metro project design scored 82.86, a leading project and the highest score ever received by a project in Queensland. As a result of that, we have been provided this fetching certificate, which says that we are, the Brisbane Metro Project Inner City Infrastructure Works is a leading design project, proponent Brisbane City Council designer Arup, and of course, the contractor Akthiona. Arup and Akthiona are of course great partners of this council, and it's a great honour for us to be recognised by this. And here, Lord Mayor, would you like to receive the certificate? So, so Akthiona is the way that they say it and I say it. But not only is Brisbane Metro a leading project, I mean, in so many ways, a marvel of engineering here in the city and being emulated across South East Queensland, it is also scores extremely highly on the Infrastructure Sustainability Rating using the comprehensive system of evaluating sustainability across planning, design, construction and operation programmes of this project and its assets. It assesses these projects across what they refer to as the quadruple bottleneck of economic, environmental, social and governance categories, with the aim of driving better outcomes across all four. So while some people, while it may be a significant uplift in public transport, it also stands as a totem of our commitment to improved sustainability. So to achieve 82.86, what sets the Brisbane Metro apart to score this unprecedented level of support across the state of Queensland? It's not just token gestures, but actual genuine actions that continue to benefit the residents from years to come. Of course, there's a transformation of the Victoria Bridge into a public and active transport bridge, and the methodology, importantly, the methodology used to strengthen the existing structure rather than rebuild a new asset. An example of an environmental commitment, an example of a commitment to PT and AT, but also using refurbishment techniques that are environmentally sound across the long term. The Adelaide Street Tunnel in particular was constructed using an innovative construction methodology that maintained the use of the surface above the construction zone. By doing this, we preserved trees and were able to use our public transport system uninterrupted on the surface while improving the road and pedestrian corridor throughout construction. The Adelaide Street Tunnel was originally proposed to consider a cut-and-cover methodology in some portions, similar to how King George Square Car Park was delivered many decades ago. This would have seen a significant reduction in amenity on Adelaide Street through construction. However, none of that occurred because of our superior methodology. The project also protected and celebrated Brisbane's rich heritage. Can I also encourage all councillors to inspect the remnant, the relic of the convict hospital, which has been restored and put in place at the corner of George and Adelaide Street? So as I said, not only is a commitment to a high level of environmental design through the project itself, but the other components being allowed to use the surface for PT, refurbishing existing assets and improving existing assets are ways that we have reduced our carbon effects onto our planet. For example, our project included fewer than 39,751,000 tonnes of CO2 equivalent prevented from entering the atmosphere through the use of green energy and hybrid vehicles used during construction. This is but one example of how we are continuing our commitment to sustainability, continuing our commitment to improving the environment while making sure people get home on an extremely modern transport system.
Further questions, councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the...
My question is to the Lord Mayor. You were recently interviewed by the ABC Radio last week and questioned as to why metered parking was introduced and extended in over 10 streets in the riverside part of Milton. There was no consultation, no notification of residents, businesses, or to myself as a local councillor. Lord Mayor, through the chair, you said on ABC Radio that you are introducing metering due to competition for parking because of fast growth in the area. However, at the same time, this LMP council cut ferry services to Milton Ferry Terminal by 40%, resulting in a decrease in the Milton Ferry Terminal patronage by 50%. Lord Mayor, through the chair, how can this LMP council both introduce more metered parking in the riverside high-density Milton area to manage the surge in vehicles and parking demand, while at the same time cut critical public transport ferry services to the exact same area?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I wonder, if you're asking for comparisons, I wonder how you can simultaneously advocate for motorists while also advocating against motorists, like the Greens always do. How can you simultaneously say you support unlimited free-on-street parking when you actually support the removal of free-on-street parking for the creation of bike lanes everywhere? So if you want to point out discrepancies in positions, then I think that's a good one to start with, councillor Chongwa, because we know that you have an anti-car agenda. We know that the Greens have an anti-car agenda. We know, we know you have an anti-motorist agenda and that you'd prefer no one to be driving their cars and no one to be parking at all. And I wonder if, when you're championing the free parking in the local area, that you also admit that you don't support car use and you don't support free park?
I believe relevance to the question that councillor Chongwa was asking.
Don't uphold that point of order, the Lord Mayor has five minutes to answer, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so it is ironic that this question has been answered, has been asked, because we know the Greens' position on car parking, we know the Greens' position on motorists, and to somehow now...
One moment, please, Lord Mayor, point of order, councillor Madsen.
I believe in the meetings of law that the Lord Mayor can't debate the question. The question was, and will repeat, how can this LMP council both introduce metered parking in high-density areas in Milton while also taking away critical public transport?
Lord Mayor.
Well, the reality is, the decision on the ferries was made because it was one of the least-used terminals in the whole network. And so we'd like to see those numbers get up. And I think there's a high level of consistency with managing car parking and encouraging public transport use. They actually two go hand in hand. Now councillor Chongwa may not get that link, but I get that link. If you're managing car parking more effectively, you're also, as a side effect, encouraging better transport use. And we'd love to be able to increase the services back to Milton Terminal when the demand is there. And we hope that demand is there very soon. So we'd love to see better use of a terminal that we invested in so that people can use it. But the reality is, we know that the councillors that are complaining the loudest are the ones that had the less use, the least use in their terminals. And that's councillor Chongwa and councillor Collier. Those areas had the lowest use in the City Cat network. And so we'd love to see those numbers increase. We'd love to continue to evolve and adapt the ferry network to meet demand that is there. And so we've been very consistent, is if there's demand there, then we continue to improve services. If the demand is low, then we also need to allocate that demand to where the demand is high as well. Now, I have expressed a desire here, and I'll continue to express that, that if the circumstances change, then we're happy to look at the traveling patterns of the City Cats and the stopping patterns of the City Cats. That is something we'd love to do, because what that would mean is that more people want to use the City Cat in Milton. And that would be a good thing, that will be a really good thing. Now, when it comes to the parking arrangements, we know that changes to on-street parking are always something that generates a lot of interest. But we have to manage the parking to make sure that we maximize the turnover of the car parking and the availability of the car parking. And as Milton continues to change, the parking restrictions will continue to change as well. But what I can say, though, is that we've been working with the residents in that area. And for those residents who had concerns about changes and concerns about the notice, we've taken those concerns on board. And also, we have also waived a number of fines that residents raised concerns about, because we want to be fair and reasonable here, even though we accept there is a need to change these parking restrictions. And so we're very happy to take a fair and reasonable approach, we'll continue doing that. And the same thing goes for the ferry services at Park Road, Milton as well. When the demand is there, we're happy to have a look at further changes to the network. But at this point in time, adjustments were made to the two least-used terminals in the City Cat network. Now, over time, I know that will change, and that'll be a good thing, and we'd love to get more people on to City Cats as well.
That now ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee reporter, 1st of September 2025. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. Given further extensive LMP overseas travel in the last week, I move that the motion currently lying on the table, that this council suspend all international travel until the Storybridge footpaths are reopened, come off the table.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier that the motion from the 10th of June 2025 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those against, no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bell. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, there have only been eight in favor and 16 against.
That is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 1st of September 2025, be adopted.
Seconded. Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 1st of September 2025, be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I could ask that clause C be taken, serated for debate, and clause E be taken, serated for debate.
B and D, sorry, B and C.
C and E.
C and E, sorry.
Separately.
Separately for debate and vote.
Yeah, which would then leave A, B, D, F together as a group.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, A, B, D, and F.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say upfront how appalled I was at the bomb threat that was made at the Islamic College of Brisbane on Friday. This is a really worrying trend that seems to be happening across Australia now with different groups targeting for racial or religious reasons. And we've seen where this leads. It's not something we should accept or tolerate in an inclusive and harmonious society. And we should say no to any kind of hatred or discrimination based on race or religion or any other factor. And so we've also seen in recent times as well ongoing targeting of members of our Jewish community. And we've also seen really poorly thought-out and negative attacks on all kinds of migrants, whether they be from India or any other part of the world. And once again, we stand united in saying no. Now, when it comes to the Islamic College of Brisbane, these are children that we're talking about here, and they have a right to live in this city free from fear and discrimination, just like any other children do. And it is something that we should absolutely all be united in condemning. The reality is, the multicultural community we have is not just a strength, it's a superpower. And no one gets to take that away from us. We are a very multicultural community. Almost a third of Brisbane residents were born overseas. And so what we've seen in recent times is deeply disturbing. And that goes for all kinds of discrimination as well. At around the same time as the, as we saw that bomb threat against the Islamic College, we also had antisemitic vandalism at the Jewish cemetery in Maukavat, which is our council cemetery, with swastikas painted on parts of that cemetery. Now, that is not only a Jewish cemetery and has a Jewish chapel there, it is also a Muslim cemetery, there's a Muslim section there as well. It's a very multicultural cemetery. And so to have those kind of hate symbols graffitied onto that cemetery is also something deeply concerning and something we must resist and push back against. Now, this, you know, it's one thing for us at the council level to condemn this, and it's one thing for us to talk about the great social cohesion that we've enjoyed here, but we need all levels of government to step up on this and be absolutely united. Because we've seen what happened when the federal government let left-wing extremist activists get out of hand and peddle their hatred. And now we've seen the extreme right doing the same thing. And this is not, this is not what we should tolerate and expect in Australia. This is the sort of division and hatred we see in other parts of the world. We have long been free of most of this, but that can change really quickly, and recent times have shown that. And so we must be united in saying no, in pushing back hard, in also enforcing the laws of this country as well. We have very strong protections against discrimination and hatred. We have protections and strong laws against hate symbols. And whether they be the display of swastikas or other hate symbols, there are laws in place, and these laws need to be enforced. Because increasingly, the stories that we're hearing throughout the community of people that have never felt unsafe or discriminated against in the past, suddenly feeling unsafe and discriminated against, we all have a collective responsibility to push back hard, to push back firmly, and to ensure that this is truly a place where everyone has freedom from discrimination, equal opportunities under the law, and the freedom to practice any faith that they wish, or no faith at all, the freedom to celebrate the culture of the place that they came from, whilst also celebrating Australia and being Australian. These are fundamental freedoms and rights that we have, and ones that we should absolutely fight to protect. I know one of our towering pillars in the multicultural community, who passed away this year, Dr Conbui, always used to remind us on a regular basis that freedom isn't free and that it is something that we should never, ever take for granted. We need to remind ourselves that often major disturbing and cataclysmic events happen because people turn a blind eye to the small acts of discrimination and hatred, and then they grow bigger and bigger, and then those acts get worse and worse. And there are countless examples all around the world where that's been allowed to happen. And Brisbane, Australia, has always been different. At citizenship ceremonies here in this building, I often remind people about the story of my father coming here as a migrant and the fact that he came from Germany. And just 15 years before he arrived, Australia had been in conflict with Germany. Not once, but twice in two world wars. Yet my dad was made to feel welcome here. And he wasn't subject to hatred because he was German. Now, that would have been very easy to occur. And you see around the world, there are still countries that hate each other following the Second World War. Because of what happened in the Second World, they still hate each other. They have never let go of that hatred, they have never forgiven each other. And in Australia, we had people from countries that we had previously been in conflict with coming here, and we welcomed them with open arms. And that's the kind of Australia that I believe in. That's the kind of Australia that I hope we all believe in. But it requires ongoing work. It requires us all to say no to hatred and discrimination. Last night, the assets, including the City Hall, the Storybridge, Victoria Bridge, and the Kangaroo Point Bridge in Radcliffe Place, were lit up in pink to celebrate the Brisbane Festival. Tonight, the Kangaroo Point Bridge and the Storybridge will be lit up in red to support Fetal Alcohol Syndrome Disorder Awareness Month, which is observed on the ninth day of the ninth month across Australia. And on Saturday, all the assets will be lit up in magenta for World Sepsis Day, which has been held on September 13th every year since 2012. In terms of the items in front of us, so just dealing with item A, B, D, and F. So item A is the Asset Street Drainage Project, and it seeks approval from the state government for the resumption of easements to facilitate a drainage project at Asset Street, Turinga. And this is one of the many ways we're improving our flood resilience and drainage across the city. Drainage projects by their nature can be incredibly costly and time-consuming, often because it requires resumptions or easement resumptions. These are often complicated projects in built-up areas, and obviously, Turinga is one of those areas. But it does complement the broader suite of works we've done recently to upgrade the stormwater line on Beatrice Street as well. To continue upgrading the drainage infrastructure, we need to secure easements on two properties, one located on Queen's Road and the other on Beatrice Street. Since both properties are home to apartment blocks, this makes access planning especially important. Properties in this part of Turinga are prone to overland flooding because they sit on the lower slope of the hill. And without enough gully traps and pipes for the water to escape through, then the runoff tends to accumulate, creating issues for residents. And so we'll fix that by installing a series of new gully traps at the hotspots for overland flooding and building a new stormwater line from Queen's Road to the recently completed pipe at Beatrice Street. And once completed, this project will significantly upgrade the capacity of the existing network and ensure it can cater for future growth in the area. Item B is the lease of premises for the marine navigation facility at the Nudgee Transfer Station. And this is a facility that's operated by Maritime Safety Queensland. It provides essential public services, including radar and positioning technology to support safe navigation along our coastline. This has been operating on the roof of a building at Nudgee's Transfer Station for many years under a lease that is due to expire in April 2026. DTMR or the Department of Transport...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair.
Seconded. It's been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by Councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor.
So the Department of Transport and Main Roads has requested that the lease be renewed for a further 10 years, ensuring that this critical infrastructure can continue to operate. So obviously we are proposing to extend that arrangement. And this is something that's obviously good for the wider community and important for maritime safety. Item D is the supply, installation and maintenance of heating and ventilation and air conditioning equipment. We currently own or operate over 200 sites with either heating, ventilation or air conditioning equipment installed. And the needs of these sites, which include here in City Hall, community lease venues, including community halls, various bus depots, our Green Square office facilities and also cemeteries are all varying. They're all different kinds of buildings, the requirements in each one are different. And this equipment obviously requires regular maintenance to ensure continued performance. I've noticed here in City Hall that the air conditioning seems to be not as cold since Councillor Wines has not been in the chair. So I'm not sure if that's a problem with the system or whether Councillor Wines had something to do with that. But certainly the behaviour in the chamber used to be a lot better back then. So councillor Lenders, I'm not sure what we can take away from that. Couple of degrees might make a difference. The new contracts allow for the addition and deletion of sites to accommodation, sorry, to accommodate the transition out of sites such as Green Square, which will happen in 2027, and the addition of new sites, such as the one we recently had at the Rochdale Metro Depot. And so there's opportunities to make adjustments as our accommodation needs change. The, the contract activity will also explore innovation options with diagnostics being used to help reduce energy use and improve efficiency in the buildings. Now, item F. Item F is the report of the Audit Committee meeting on the 14th of August, sorry. And as we always do, this is presented in to council in line with the City of Brisbane Regulation. Our Audit Committee's job is to work with the Queensland Audit Office to provide independent oversight of our policies, procedures and practices to ensure that we are addressing potential risks and ultimately protecting council and its ratepayers. The committee briefed the CEO, was briefed by the CEO, the CFO, Chief Legal Counsel, Chief Internal Officer, Auditor and Chief Information Officer on a range of matters. Topics discussed are set out in the minutes, including updates on the cybersecurity improvement programme, new corporate website, digital Brisbane strategy and the My Services Brisbane Portal, which was launched in June and which has previously been mentioned here in the chamber. And of course, the update was provided on the annual report and financial statements, which is coming through to the chamber in the near future. There was very good feedback from the meeting. Strategic Finance acknowledged the engagements and solid working relationship with the Queensland Audit Office, particularly in relation to the finalising of the 2024-25 annual financial statement. So I'd like to commend this report to the chamber.
For the speakers, Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I wondered why during question time the Lord Mayor brought up the issue of the Story Bridge toll again. And you just have to look at Quans, just have a look at answers to Quans to see why he's got all defensive again about this because he's had six meetings since the new LMP government's been in place in the lead up to his announcement of a toll on the Story Bridge.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Six meetings, six meetings.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Chair, will you keep the councillor to the report, please?
Thank you. Please come back, come to the report, actually, Councillor Cassidy, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. They're very sensitive, just testing that out. Obviously very sensitive about that. They've been caught out, they've been caught out. It's no coincidence that we have all these series of meetings in the lead up to an announcement about a toll on Story Bridge, and then we see the LMP state government change the law to allow a toll on the Story Bridge. And then we have the Lord Mayor coming in here talking about, again, a toll on the Story Bridge.
Councillor Cassidy, come to what is actually in the report and any other issues you can raise them in general business. Thank you.
Incredible stuff there, Chair. Could I ask that item F be taken seriously for voting, please, in this group? So clause A is the relief drainage project at Adset Street, Taringa. Project provides flood protection and reduces sewer overflows in Taringa, a 10-year average recurrence interval immunity from stormwater flooding. This is something that happens around Brisbane, happens in my ward, have some experience with this. This will assist residents along Queen's Road and Beatrice Street, as we have heard, and it's a win for them. But we also need to see more wins for people right across Brisbane and thousands of other properties who are affected need to see this kind of investment. Here for this one, there's been notices issued and no objections received, and the resumptions will proceed for drainage easement with compensation processes. It's interesting that this item does come just a few weeks after council updated flood maps for, I think it's 10,000 people who are affected by them. And at the time during the debate, the LMP said time and time again that there's nothing that could be done about that flooding apart from updating maps. You can't stop flooding with drainage, they said. So either they're wrong about that or this is just a waste of time and money. I don't believe it is. But it's just interesting that you get these different positions from the LMP, meeting to meeting, quite embarrassingly caught out all the time in their web of mistruths. And, and they won't talk about the solutions to problems that are sitting there looking at us right in the face when people need them, especially when their houses are being rezoned to be at a higher risk of, of real life flooding. And yet we see a few weeks later, barely a mention, barely a mention from the Lord Mayor about the fact that a drainage solution is in fact the right solution. But, so as we know, as we know, Chair, you can mitigate flooding with drainage works. It is effective, but projects like these that we have before us today are just drip fed into the suburbs because we've seen, again, this year, this year compared to last year, $200 million cut again from the infrastructure budget, which funds drainage projects out in the suburbs of Brisbane, barely $30 million being spent this year on actual drainage infrastructure, on actual drainage infrastructure. And as we've been saying, the, the, and this isn't us actually, we've been pointing out things that LMP councillors are starting to say now, is that with increased costs for this sort of infrastructure, the amount of money that the Lord Mayor is putting in, which in this, this case is less, we're getting far less funded out in the suburbs of Brisbane when it comes to SEF funding, where that funding is stagnant, we're also seeing less because of costs escalating. So you don't cut $200 million from the budget and expect to see better outcomes when it comes to flooding, especially even when you can finally, finally admit that investing in drainage infrastructure will actually address flooding in these circumstances. So you can't, you can't make this stuff up here, Chair, but we see, as I said, right around Brisbane, right around Brisbane, there is a need, a big need for investing in drainage infrastructure. And you don't achieve that by, as I said, cutting the budget. Suburbs that get reclassified through those flood maps are seeing insurance premiums go through the roof. Obviously those companies aren't listening to Councillor Davis's rare appearances in the media when, when these changes are made and, you know, the finger wagging and saying you better not increase premiums when we increase the flood risk for 10,000 people. We see that that's actually the case, that actually does happen, insurance premiums do go up. So they're not only seeing an increase to their rates, fees and charges, they're seeing increases to insurance premiums and they're seeing less being delivered by this LMP regime in their suburbs. As I said, there's places all over the city, here's one on Sairs Street in Stafford. This is after a minor rain event, a very minor rain event, and water is still sitting, sun shining, water's still sitting halfway across the road, halfway across the road. And that's the street that actually has drain in it over there in Stafford. I know, and I've talked about this a lot in Brighton, Sangato Deegan, where, where streets and yards and increasingly habitable areas of people's homes are being inundated when we're getting moderate rain, not extreme rain, but moderate rain. So a lot more does need to be done, a lot more needs to be done. And so we support this work, we support this project, but I think the people of Brisbane who would see this as an example would say that's the sort of priorities we want to see from council. Not once in a blue moon, not once a year where we see a project come through council meetings and we just see one or two a year go through contracts. They want to see less spent on multi-million dollar advertising budgets and less spent on overseas junkets, less spent on catering for E and C lunches and things like that, and more spent on the basics out in the suburbs of Brisbane. Sadly, we're not going to see that this year again because of the cuts we've seen to council's infrastructure budget. But that's the kind of thing that people want to see their rates spent on. Clause B, lease of premises for a marine navigation facility at the Nudgee Transfer Station. So this is a lease with the state government, TMR, for that facility. Lease renewals for 10 years, rent starting at $13,702 per annum with escalations. That's just $274 a week. Great deal for the state government, I suspect, on that. Spare a thought for many in Brisbane looking for a weekly rental that's that cheap, or small businesses looking for space that's unaffordable or a bit of space on the footpath now where they've seen a 600% increase in their footpath dining permits in the last year alone. But I guess it's good for the LMP if you can get it. But we support this facility continuing in place. Missed opportunity there to renegotiate a better deal, I suspect, but it's an important one nonetheless to have safe navigation in that part of the world. Clause D is the significant contracting plan for air, air conditioning, heating, ventilation. So this one covers, as we've heard, 150 council sites with HVAC ranging from small systems to complex City Hall facilities. The current CPA expires in '26 and some suppliers are underperforming, prompting an early return to market, as we see here. You know, this is the sort of big stuff we hear debated. After 21 years, the LMP is still trying to get the air conditioning right here in City Hall. Lord Mayor spent the most amount of time, the greatest amount of levity in his E and C contribution. Yeah, yeah, true. Talking about the air conditioning here in City Hall. You'd think by now, this is Brisbane, right, like we're feeling the effects of climate change, you think they'd sort of have air conditioning sorted out by now, but anyway. Estimated expenditure is $14 million. The procurement strategy ensures competitive outcomes and innovation, so we're told. So I guess maybe that's why we're going back to market early, because after 21 years, the LMP still struggle to find the right air conditioning supplier to meet Brisbane's But when you think about the effects of climate change, we're feeling that as residents here in Brisbane, we're experiencing that through weather events as well. You would think more broadly and an issue that, that you think the Lord Mayor would bring to this place, given it's now been six months since council's failure on tree canopy has been exposed so fundamentally, the cuts of the Lord Mayor has brought to the tree maintenance budget has been aired so publicly that we're desperately short in reaching those targets for tree cover out in the suburbs of Brisbane and the, doing genuinely having New World Design with buildings that breathe rather than just-
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Strong.
Move for an extension.
Seconded. It's been moved by Councillor Strong for an extension and seconded by Councillor Kim. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So genuine buildings that breathe initiative sounds good and things like that, but not when you realise that it's all developer led and profit driven under the LMP, unfortunately. And maybe, maybe if the Lord Mayor thinks it's a bit warm in here, he could step out the front in King George Square, even in the middle of winter, and find a hot and barren place out there, let alone when we're coming into summer. And we see those every couple of year, roll around announcements by the Lord Mayor when he's put under some pressure about that to announce something's going to happen in King George Square. And then we find out that something is actually increased commercialisation and flogging off per square metreage of King George Square to the highest bidder. So plenty of ways, plenty of ways we could cool down our city outside of bringing a key item to council, one of the few items, the very few items that E and C have debated in this session to the council chamber about air conditioning, nothing about fixing Brisbane's tree canopy problem, nothing about fixing King George Square, nothing about addressing the cuts to the suburban drainage budget. This is just, you know, shows what the LMP's priorities are here for all of us. Finally, the report of the Audit Committee on the 14th of August 2025. So council's role here is to note the report. As always, we don't see the detail in these reports to be able to make a balanced judgement on what this organisation is doing to address the problems that have been raised by the Audit Committee. So important things are discussed by this committee, as we can see in all of those points there. But certainly, non-administration councillors, non-LMP councillors are not privy to the information within those presentations. It's clear, it's clear that the LNP councillors are privy to the information that is presented to the Audit Committee and its external partners. But if you're not a member of the LNP, you are not given the information to properly scrutinise the decisions of council. It's another example, another example of backsliding in transparency we see from this LNP regime. An audit committee ought to find savings and efficiencies for ratepayers, but we can't scrutinise what those findings are or how those savings have been made. For example, ratepayers ought to know if if an LNP politician is the recipient of largesse, in which case we would support cutbacks to that, of course, maybe those overseas junkets, maybe those catered lunches, maybe all of those things, all that self-advertising, maybe if we'd like to see that. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, ratepayer-funded dog events to politically promote LNP councillors that, which are not, not available to non-LNP councillors again. Maybe, maybe we should, maybe we should be privy to some of those suggestions and maybe we should be able to make some of those suggestions to the Audit Committee. My Services Brisbane mobile app for self-service went live in June 2025 and an overview of privacy controls and early performance was provided. That's an important function of council and we as councillors here are, we are the council. Under the City of Brisbane Act and Regulation, when you look at what the definition of, of the council is, it's the 26 of us plus the Lord Mayor coming together and making decisions. It's not in fact the CEO and, and senior executives, it's actually here. So, but what we find out in just some footnotes in an Audit Committee report is that, that My Services Brisbane mobile app for self-service went live in June 2025 and there's been some oversight into its privacy controls and early performance. What, what are they? We do not have access to that as non-LNP councillors. LNP councillors have access to that, but we don't. And, and, and this is the function, this Audit Committee is the function for the council, for all of us, to have oversight on all of those issues that are raised, particularly here, around the performance of the My Services mobile app and, and privacy controls around people's private information. And we are, we are responsible for making decisions. We are held responsible for making those decisions, but we are denied the information relating to them. Maybe the, maybe the committee was satisfied with the information given, but again, we are not privy to that. What metrics are used to judge performance, downloads daily, users, qualitative feedback, and what are the privacy controls that are in place? We, we on this side of the chamber, we will never know, we will never know. But if you're an LNP council, you have special access to information that is denied to non-LNP councillors. In the Chief Information Officer report, there was an overview of AI and implications again for privacy, for security, for implications on council's code of conduct and so on, for the code of conduct that we are subject to as councillors. Now, I'm sure also like the employees of, of council and certain ones that have to have oversight of this would need to know what those things are, and maybe they are, maybe they are, given the information that we as non-LNP councillors are denied. Of course, LNP councillors can access that if they want, particularly when it comes to AI and implications on council's workforce as well. Um uh particularly when it comes to A I and and um implications on um council's workforce as well. Um we do want to make sure at every step of the way that we have um oversight about um job security and what opportunities council can provide employees um to enhance their jobs and their productivity rather than attacking them. Um and I'm sure those staff and 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 councillors would love to have a say in what that A I strategy is and how we are pursuing that, um particularly i- in in the case of ensuring we have a workforce um that is well-supported uh and can support the people of Brisbane. Um uh and the Queensland Audit Office, we read as well, have a particular audit focus on accounting for the Brisbane Metro project. Uh and they had, there were some internal uh control issues and re-raised issues. Hmm. So I wonder whether, wonder whether when councillor Wines went down to Office Works and printed his special certificate to award to the Lord Mayor today, I wonder whether he is aware of what the internal control issues and and continuing re-raising of old issues around the Brisbane Metro project is. Lord Mayor comes in here and councillor Wines and councillor Murphy before him, and they carry on about how apparently perfect everything about the Brisbane Metro project has gone. Uh not least, not least that it's seven hundred million dollars over budget and two years delayed. It was supposed to be open at the end of twenty twenty-three, and we're still not seeing that, not seeing that tunnel open today. And and the Queensland Audit Office is raising internal control issues and finding themselves having to re-raise issues again and again in the Audit Committee. What are they? As non-L N P councillors, we are denied that information and we will never know. Uh L N P councillors, um they know, they'll never raise it because it's a regime. We know what happens to people in a regime internally when they start to raise issues. Um uh but it is concerning, it is concerning when we read these things and we support the work of the Audit Committee to ask these questions. But we are the council here collectively. And when you, and when you continue to deny information to um uh councillors who are members of a different political party, that raises its own concerns as well. Uh and I understand we have uh an administration that forms uh the the E N C and and chairs council committees and an opposition that doesn't do that because we are in the minority. Uh but it's still not acceptable that as a council, we are here to endorse this report today and 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 are being asked to give a big green tick to the work that uh the administration is doing to address all these issues that are being raised at the Audit Committee, particularly around internal control issues and issues that continue um uh to be raised by external organisations that are not being addressed, and we're not given the information. So uh it's just another example of how this uh is the most secretive regime uh in Brisbane's history. And they try anything and everything, they change the rules, they change the laws, um they stop answering questions. Um uh they deny information when you do it uh through official channels and you resort to uh submitting R T Is and then uh you're left hanging for six months with with unending uh extensions. Um this is fundamental stuff to our function as councillors and a council, uh and it's not good enough that we're being denied the most basic information.
Further speakers, councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item A, the relief drainage project at Adset Street in Turinga. And it was only last week that I was out walking the warden door-knocking this beautiful leafy hilly area of Turinga that I had the opportunity to hear directly from residents about local issues that matter most to them. So this pocket of Turinga, Queen's Road, Princess Street, Adset Street and Beatrice Street, which all run parallel off Swan Road, I can confirm, Madam Chair, that locals here are deeply invested in this neighbourhood and residents will be super appreciative of the drainage improvements that will better protect their homes and the community. The objective of this relief drainage project is to progressively expand Brisbane's storm water system so it meets the desired standard of service. This includes keeping pace with development and sure and ensuring that we minimise flooding impacts both on our roads, which are vital for safe access, and on residential properties where the cost and stress of storm events can be considerable. This Adset Street Storm Water Works form part of a larger Westerham Street Turinga Catchment Relief Drainage Scheme, which commenced in two thousand and four. This scheme is designed to provide a ten-year average recurrence interval immunity for properties in the catchment, giving residents greater resilience against flooding. This stage of the project will focus on the overland flow paths which run from Queen's Road through Princess Street and Adset Street before connecting to Beatrice Street and then continuing onto Indrapilly Road. A new storm water line will be constructed to link the Queen's Road with the upgraded network into Beatrice Street. Multiple gullies between four and six at each location will be installed at key road crossings to ensure water flows efficiently into the system and the capacity of the downstream drainage network is fully utilised. The benefits of this project to the community are clear. It will reduce overland flooding and ensure our infrastructure keeps pace with population growth and development. Ultimately, this work delivers greater flood resilience and peace of mind for families living in this area. And thank you, Madam Chair. As mentioned earlier by the Lord Mayor, easements are also required through private properties to allow both construction and future maintenance. Madam Chair, this project is recognised as a high priority through its construction and will depend on available budget and citywide priorities. But when delivered, however, the Adset Street Relief Drainage Project will provide lasting benefits, reducing flooding, stronger resilience and easement upgrades to meet the needs of our growing city. And I'm very much looking forward to seeing this rolling out, and I commend this item to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Uh yes, just briefly on uh item A. Um I note that council is going to undertake some drainage work in Adset Street, uh Turinga. Uh and I note um that no doubt it will provide um uh a useful one-in-ten average recurrence for the residents who will benefit from this project. Um the only problem with this is that I've got residents in Sampson Street in in Annelie who've been waiting three years to have their broken stormwater drain replaced that runs through theirs and their neighbours' backyards. Um and there's still no end in sight to when council's going to fix the stormwater drain that currently floods their properties um every time in heavy rain. So these people have a broken drain that council won't fix. Now, council have told me that it's complex and they have to seek budget, but it's been three years since it was reported to council as being broken, and for three years it hasn't been fixed. So I seriously question why people in Turinga-
One moment, please, councillor Johnston. Point of order councillor Davis.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure that Sampson Street is in this particular item. If the councillor could come back to Adset Street.
Thank you. Councillor. Councillor Johnston, and can you come back to the report, please, specifically Adset Street?
Uh yes, and look, as I was saying, I I'm sure fixing this drain in Adset Street Turinga is a citywide priority, but the residents in Annelie are asking why are they being ignored and deprioritised? And after three years of waiting for a drain to be fixed, which will be complex, it's a fair question to say, how did this project get prioritised over the project in Sampson Street, Annelie, I think?
Further questions? Councillor Allen.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item B, the proposed lease for a maritime navigation facility at the Nudgee Transfer Station. Um this particular navigation facility is close to where Kedron Brook uh meets Morton Bay, so uh obviously quite a good location for such a facility. It's been there since, uh well, certainly before two thousand and nine and perhaps many decades before that. Um it operates from the roof, the Nudgee Transfer Station, bringing it in close proximity to the Ken Vaughan Memorial Boat Ramp across the road, which is used regularly by uh not only local residents, but boat lovers in general, recreational fishermen and the rest. The um recreational facilities across the road are another element that makes Brisbane the lifestyle capital of Australia and gives people even more to see and enjoy in our natural environment. Now, whether on weekends or for special occasions, people really enjoy getting out on the water near this area, and we need to ensure that they can do so and return to their loved ones safe and sound. And to this end, the service plays a key role in facilitating safe and reliable navigation through modern radar and positioning technology, helping to support maritime services and those on the water. With another ten years on the table, we can look forward to that support continuing into the future without disruption, maintaining and contributing to maritime safety. And uh councillor Cassidy made some suggestion that we hadn't asked for enough rental of uh for this particular facility, thirteen thousand seven hundred odd a year. Um at the end of the day, it's a tower on a roof. I'm just not sure how much we might charge, uh other than what we're already charging. The only other things on the roof of this facility are IBIS, so I think it's probably a pretty good return. Um or alternatively, it might be councillor Cassidy uh sort of starting to become aware of the benefits of commercialisation and perhaps uh the potential return to the ratepayers of Brisbane. But nonetheless, uh this lease will ensure this facility is in place for another ten years and continue to support maritime safety in the area. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Davis.
Uh thank you very much, uh Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item A, uh the Adset Street Drainage Project in Turinga, which is a great project, uh which seeks to improve uh the area's flood resiliency. Uh Madam Chair, I'm very pleased that um those uh across the chamber are going to be supporting uh this item, but as always, it comes with a caveat, doesn't it? Um Madam Chair, Brisbane is, as you know, uh or has one of the largest drainage systems and networks across the country. It spans four thousand kilometres um of pipes and more than ninety thousand drains. It's big. So to put that into perspective, uh the length of our drainage network would go all the way to Adelaide and all the way back. We are a city on a flood plain. We cannot stop flood just with drainage. We need a range of methods uh in order to do uh to do that. Um and they're included in our programme of works. Um it does include upgrade to the stormwater network, and I'll get to this item in a moment, but it also includes cleaning um and maintaining the gullies and open drains. Um it rehabilitates our older stormwater systems, um and it it's about building the resilience of our network. And we will continue to do that. We continue to invest in drainage across the city. Um and, you know, we have our unique set of circumstances because uh we are on a flood ta- plane and we are a growing city. We are working very, very hard um to ensure that we get the best benefits uh for our residents. The item in front of us today, though, um as I said, is around the Adset Street Drainage Project in Turinga. Uh as councillor uh Wolf said, this is part of the Westerham Street Turinga Catchment Relief Drainage Scheme, uh which commenced back in two thousand and four, but uh continues ongoing. Uh in this submission, we're seeking to support to secure the necessary easements for the future construction um of the Adset Street component. Um as councillor Wolf said, uh Turinga is uh known for its steep uh terrain, uh which means that certain areas are prone to overland flow flooding. And Swan Street is one of the main routes running through the suburb um and has steep residential areas on either side of it. So on the Adset Street side, we've got a dip in the terrain known as a sag, uh where all the stormwater runoff accumulates during wet weather. Uh the natural drainage path at the base of this slope uh is approximately three hundred and twenty-five meters long, uh running laterally uh to Swan Road and intersecting numerous properties. So the drainage path does uh struggle uh in extreme uh uh events to handle the volume of water, um and it does cause overland flow flooding on a number of uh properties. As mentioned, um it will uh include installing some underground pipes and gully traps uh primarily in two main sections, from the road sag in Queen's Road, uh following the overland flow path through private properties uh to the road sag in Princess Street and from the sag in Adset Street through to private properties uh before connecting to the recently upgraded downstream network in Beatrice Street. Uh officers has been in contact with the bodies corporate of both of those apartment blocks uh where the easement is required. Uh they are very pleased with the work that's going to be done, uh and uh we're looking forward to approval from uh this room so that we can go to the Queensland State Government to resume those easements. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. No further speakers? Oh councillor, councillor Parry, sorry.
That's okay, Madam Chair. Um thank you, and I rise to speak on item D of the E N C report. Um this item today is for council to establish a corporate procurement arrangement in the form of a panel arrangement. This panel arrangement is for the supply installation and maintenance of heating, ventilation and air conditioning or H V A C um equipment across more than two hundred sites. This equip, the equipment at these sites um requires regular maintenance to ensure optimum performance. And when the equip, equipment reaches the end of its life, it also requires replacement, Madam Chair. Some of the sites included are important community facilities such as local libraries and pools and also cemeteries. Currently, the installation and maintenance activity is performed by three suppliers, and this corporate procurement arrangement is due to expire in October twenty twenty-six. The contract will run for an initial three years with options to extend up to a total of seven years. The contract will also help accelerate the phase-out of our R twenty-two refrigerant gas and provide real-time data on energy consumption. The evaluation process will focus on local benefits, customer service, innovation and environmental responsibility alongside price and capability. Council expects a strong response from the market, similar to the last tender which attracted eight offers. Madam Chair, this contract today ensures that we can continue to maintain safe, efficient and environmentally responsible H V A C systems across our facilities. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I commend this to the chamber.
Any further speakers? No further speakers, then we'll now put items A, B and D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item F to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being fourteen in favour, five against and two abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors will now move to item C. Are there any speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, uh Madam Chair. Item C is the procurement policy and plan. Uh Madam Chair, actually, just point of clarification, the Lord Mayor didn't speak on this item, did he?
No.
No, I didn't think so. So as is the case each year, council is adopting an annual procurement policy and plan for the upcoming financial year. The policy which is required under legislation outlines the way council undertakes strategic procurement and the contracting that occurs. At its core, the policy is about ensuring we continue to strengthen Brisbane's economy by prioritising local purchasing and keeping costs down for all our residents. by prioritising local purchasing and keeping costs down for all our residents. Our commitment to buying local continues, Madam Chair. With the introduction of our eighty percent local spend target, we exceeded expectations, achieving eighty percent in 2021 and just over eighty-two and a half percent last financial year. That represents almost $1.3 billion of residents' money being reinvested into our local economy, supporting local businesses and also creating local jobs in the last year. Our buy-local policy is paying dividends as well for local industry, and I know that there's much pride taken in the business community in working to improve the community that we live in. This hasn't come about by chance, though. It's the direct result of our administration's laser-like focus on supporting Brisbane businesses, investing in Brisbane businesses and buying from Brisbane businesses. We're also investing record amounts with social enterprises, doubling the benefits for rate payers by supporting employment opportunities for underrepresented and disadvantaged groups. We've seen significant increases in our spend with social enterprises in recent years, from $4.8 million in 2018-2019 to over $11 million in 2024-25. When we first started going out for social procurement, there was a relatively small number of organisations that put their hand up to work with us, but we're progressively seeing an increase in the number of organisations and also their capacity to deliver for the city of Brisbane. In terms of changes to the policy this year, only minor edits have been made. The emergency procurement exemption has been updated to reference ex-Tropical Cyclone Alfred, and our economic and sustainability principles have been updated to include the leveraging of council's intellectual property developed through innovation. Market assessments and procurement plans have also been updated to reflect the work plan that's coming in the financial year. This includes our commitment to upgrades at Milton Road, Sylvan Road and Croydon Street in Tuong, the Polara District Sports Park and a redevelopment of the Cherm Side Aquatic Centre. This policy will enable us to deliver on our plan to keep Brisbane moving while keeping costs down for rate payers, and I commend the item to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this procurement plan, uh, policy and plan for 2025-26. This is a statutory requirement to adopt a procurement policy and contracting plan annually, but as we have come to experience in the last couple of years, it also seems to be a way for the LMP to give donors work, give LMP donors work. Exhibit A, Chair, as we discovered this year, one of the companies that was awarded a contract, Giorgio's, made a significant donation to the LMP, and that's their right to do, so of course if they want to make that donation. But what's missing in the procurement plan, seeing this increasingly happen, is assurances that those, that they won't be affecting the tendering process, that there aren't conflicts of interest in there. Because it was strange when we heard the over-the-top praise in the council chamber of Giorgio's, who received that contract for the Beams Road project by councillor Wines, the over-the-top performance about this company that we then find out is an LMP donor that's been awarded quite a lot of council work. So something that is important in the interests of transparency would be, in fact, you know, procurement policy and contracting plan, procurement plan, is that we have some assurances around conflicts of interest. The people of Brisbane deserve best value for money, of course. It's not just the LMP that deserves best value for money. And the people of Brisbane have not been getting good value for money anyway under this LMP regime. Everything they touch turns to a cost blowout and a delay, whether you look at the hundred million dollar cost blowout or delay on the Kangaroo Point Bridge, the six hundred million dollar cost blowout and two-year delay on the Metro project, when you look at the hundred and thirty million dollar cost blowout and years-long delay on the Mogal Road overpass project, the list goes on and on and on. The substance of this document before us today is largely cut and pasted and from the previous year, and is a missed, a massive missed opportunity to address the serial overspending problem afflicting this LMP regime. Moving on to a more welcome inclusion here, I guess, is the title Economic Principles to Protect Council's Intellectual Property, especially important in the age of AI. Council invests rates into talent to deliver community benefits, and that ought to be owned by the community, so we should be fighting very hard to retain that. And the community ought to be compensated for the IP that they have invested in through their rates. Interesting, moving on, interesting environmental principle there. Invest in and build infrastructure that supports a low-carbon council and is resilient to climate change. I'd imagine that's pretty hard to achieve this year when we see $200 million in cuts in the infrastructure budget and council fundamentally walking away from its carbon-neutral commitments under the LMP, following the lead that's being set by LMP branch members who put these councillors in place, where they've been having their Culture War debates at the LMP convention in trying to scrap commitments to net zero. It's already been happening here in council. Before we even saw those debates at the LMP State Convention, we've seen LMP councillors walking back council's commitment to addressing climate change here in Brisbane. But perhaps the LMP position in this document here could, doesn't really matter what it is, because apparently, I'm not producing any emissions at all because they're not doing anything, I guess, is one excuse that they could certainly use, except for all the hot air we see through council's advertising budget and self-promotion, of course. The carbon footprint that we've seen from international travel, love to see whether that's captured in our carbon reports going forward as well. The globe-trotting LMP here would rival Taylor Swift. Another one, ensure procurement activities consider circular economy principles and avoid, reduce, reuse and recycle waste and recovery resources. I wonder if the LMP bothered to even look at those when they were deciding to reject a full FOGO scheme and continue to put tens of thousands of tonnes of organic material into landfill to continue to produce methane, to be continuing into the atmosphere, adding to council's carbon footprint and a massive wasted opportunity. They say the industry's not there yet. Well, it can't help if the LMP are gatekeeping the food waste of 1.3 million residents here in Brisbane. Another environmental objective says, take real and practical action to deliver a low-carbon and climate-resilient city for current and future residents of Brisbane. Well, Chair, creeks are clogged, our playgrounds are hot and no longer being covered by shade, our trees are overgrown, if that's, if there are any trees in that area anyway. On all practical measures and metrics, it's a big fail for this LMP regime's record. Updates to the new procurement plan include intellectual property privacy, fraud, corruption and the cyclone reference and functional realignments in there. The definition of a routine contract has been dropped from the new plan. Added, added to the new plan, just a rewording from last year, skilled specialist labour is expected to continue to experience upward price pressure from supply constraints, combined with strong demand which will increase with construction for the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, ramping up over the next few years. So there's significant issues here raised in looking ahead at council's ability to deliver the kind of infrastructure and services that people expect from their council, they're identifying that. But instead of investing in council's workforce and investing in council's capability to deliver basic local suburban projects, we're seeing council's workforce shrink and an increased reliance on external labour to council, which they have just identified in here, is going to cost rate payers more. And with fixed budgets, as we're now seeing from the LMP, there's no, there's no ability to escalate budgets. That is a recipe for more service cuts in the future. When you hollow out council's permanent workforce and you make cuts to infrastructure budgets, you are creating a recipe for people to pay more and get less in the suburbs into the future. That is locked in, baked in into the future because of the political decisions of this LMP regime. Looking at side-by-side comparisons between 2024-25 and 2025-26 is not completely clear because last year, the LMP mentioned specific projects, but this year, spending is just in general. I wonder why? I wonder why they've gone away from listing specific projects? It's a bit like the story of the disappearing budget book. They're no longer listing individual projects because they no longer have any intention of actually carrying them out. An example from this year, Chair, it says, construction and rehabilitation of transport and drainage infrastructure significant at $50 million. Last year, we saw specifics listed there, construction of the Victoria Park Civil Bridge and Building Catalyst Works significant, $70 million. What happened, what happened to that one? Oh, that's right, that one got cancelled because of the stadium in Victoria Park. The city deal got cancelled, but where did the money go? Where did the money go? There was money committed from council, as well as from other levels of government. We now have confirmation that those tenders have all been cancelled, which were listed in the 2024-25 procurement plan, not carried forward. Not only is that project not carried forward, but that $70 million has just disappeared altogether. So we can't, we can no longer see when significant projects are listed in this procurement plan, where they are actually going to be spent, and Chair, if they are going to be spent at all. There's no commitment in here to actually spend this money on projects, on actual real-life projects that will make a difference to people's lives where they live. On commodities and services, here, this tells us the LMP State Government is extending a coal-fired power station and scrapping Queensland's net-zero target there. They've already scrapped pump hydro and wind farm projects, making the energy mix more concentrated and vulnerable to commodity price shocks. So again, political decisions that LMP regimes make at all levels are impacting on the ordinary lives of people and hamstringing us into the future. Price fluctuations for coal-fired, coal power will hit council and in turn hit rate payers, and that's what's even been identified.
Point of order, Chair.
By this LMP regime.
One moment, please, councillor Cassidy.
I'm just not sure where the coal-fired power stations are in the procurement plan, so just relevance.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy. To the report.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'm talking to the report. The Chair didn't embarrassingly just admit then that she hasn't read the attachments where it talks about Queensland's energy mix and the price fluctuations because of those decisions around extending the life of old coal-fired power stations. It might have been such, such an embarrassment.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order.
Point of order, Chair.
Move for an extension.
Seconded. It's been moved for an extension by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Kim. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, and I'll take an objection from councillor Johnson. It's actually page 12, for councillor Hutton, through you, Chair, to follow along. So those price fluctuations for coal-fired power are going to hit the rate payers of Brisbane now because of decisions that the LMP State Government have made and have been backed in, backed in by LMP councillors, backed in by LMP councillors. An A-triple-C report states there is a risk of a shortfall in the fourth quarter of 2025 and throughout 2026 if Queensland's liquefied natural gas producers export all uncontracted gas. I support the work of the Australian Workers Union, my union in pushing to legislate a sovereign gas reserve, and good on them for doing so as well, because that's not just some, some thing that's just out there in the news, that's something that is affecting rate payers this year and will be affecting rate payers next year as well. There's a massive addition on AI, and we've talked a bit about AI today. AI does, of course, have the potential to increase accuracies in projections and designs, and God knows we need that with the LMP in charge here at Brisbane City Council. But costs to engage firms and who know how to use that and know how to support council in leveraging its power will increase and therefore increase costs to contract for these services. And again, relating to that earlier point, that given council doesn't have a robust capacity inside the organisation to do this, we are continuing, under the LMP, to rely on external contractors for this work more and more and more each year. And what does that do? It pushes up the cost of everything, and then we see more cuts to the infrastructure budget to pay for it. It's this vicious cycle that the LMP, just because of their political proclivities and political decisions, are forcing the rate payers and residents of Brisbane into. Broadly, professional service industries will be adapting to meet rapidly changing conditions, we're told, and council will be competing for specialist knowledge. Instead of just competing in a, in a marketplace, we should be competing with a workforce that, you know, used to, used to be sitting at 10,000 people and have a wide range of skills to meet the needs of council's service delivery and of council's projects right across the organisation. So instead of just competing with other companies that are trying to access these services, we really need to be thinking about boosting our capacity within council as We see one here, getting towards the end of it, Chair, a priority on digital marketing. Music to the Lord Mayor's ears. A priority on digital marketing. I'm sure he'll be grasping, yeah, I'm sure he's probably trying to utilise rate payers' money to expend his, his own personal agent, should a news network. He'll be grasping at anything in this multimillion-dollar advertising budget that is growing year on year as well. And again, to look at a comparison where we see $200 million cut for the infrastructure budget, where we see almost 500 staff cut from council's workforce, and yet we see these focus and the priority on increasing digital marketing as well as traditional mainstream marketing increase and spending on advertising continue to increase each and every year, you get a good sense of what the priorities of the LMP are. And finally, in here in this plan, and importantly, Chair, bears spending some time on, is we see more buses and ferries set for offloading to the scrap heap this financial year. In a time where clearly we need more buses to connect the suburbs of Brisbane and more ferries to service stops that we just heard from the Lord Mayor today, he seemed to think it was a bit interesting that when you cut forty percent of the services to some of those stops, that it's hard to get those services to grow.
Yep.
My God. Like, it's just incredible. He believes the things he says sometimes. I think he actually does believe those things. How is it, how is it? How is it in 2025, following the introduction of what is supposed to have been the greatest, according to the LMP, the greatest revolution in public transport services this city has ever seen through the new bus network and 40 metro buses? How is it that we continue to have people give us feedback that they've been, you know, terribly affected by service cuts? And it's not just their own personal experiences, we see that in the data as well. When you see that one of the, the most important routes, like the 330 on the north side, lose something like 5,000 passengers in a month after these changes, and that's not one that's seen some duplicating service introduced by the Metro. This is one that runs from your ward, Chair, through mine, that is now seeing, through the changes that you endorsed, seen 5,000 fewer passengers utilizing that service in the month of July. And to see at the start of this bus contract, and then that's baked in to the procurement plan going forward as well, a bigger focus on retiring and scrapping buses and ferries from our network than investing in building new ones is absolutely incredible. How can it we have a Lord Mayor and any, any, any LMP Chair get up in the council chamber or publicly as well and say, on the one hand, we're having 600 people a week, I think is the figure, I've heard the Lord Mayor use quite a lot, 600 people a week moving to Brisbane, and yet quietly, he's not even here to do it, to do the dirty work, he's left the council chamber to introduce a procurement plan which bakes in the scrapping of buses? How does, how does he think he can address congestion? He can't just, he can't just introduce a couple of clearways and hope to get some software updates to our traffic light system.
Left turn on red.
Yeah. And, and trying with a, desperately trying to find a distraction with left turn on, reintroducing left turn on red. on red when he's cutting bus services while 600 people a week are moving to Brisbane. I think the fact that most of this is cut and pasted from previous years with a few negative changes to this procurement plan we see before us today, which actually put in place the ability for the LMP behind closed doors to scrap projects that they otherwise had announced at budget time by not specifically listing them in the year ahead.
Yep.
It's just incredible. The people of Brisbane deserve so much better than they're getting, but I guess this is what you get after 21 years of a stale, old political regime that are running out of ideas rapidly and running out of money. And it's being called out, being called out by their contemporaries. We heard what the Mayor of the Gold Coast had to say about that. Really quite an incredible intervention, I have to say.
Counselor.
And a more incredible intervention, I think, I'll take that interjection from councillor Griffiths. Two weeks ago, we had councillor Adams, former Deputy Mayor of Brisbane, stand up in this place and say the money that the Lord Mayor puts into building a basic footpath connections and local parks is not enough to meet demand anymore.
True.
And never a truer word has been spoken by an LMP councillor in this place than that, I have to say. I agree wholeheartedly with the words of councillor Adams two weeks ago in calling out the Lord Mayor and his political decisions. We should be seeing a procurement plan which aligns with the priorities of the people of Brisbane, and it doesn't take you much to find out what they are, to go out into the community and to talk to people and ask the question yourselves, how people are faring on our bus network after the LMP bus cuts. Go out there and ask people who are afflicted by drainage deficiencies and have streets with no footpaths and have no accessibility around their suburbs, people where, you know, trees are falling down and causing damage to private property, and then they find out the Lord Mayor's cutting millions of dollars from their budget. If you go and actually just talk to real people, I don't think their experiences align with the rhetoric we hear here in the council chamber, where the LMP get up and say that apparently Brisbane's never been moving better than it is in 2025 and apparently it's an easy place, people can come and find a rental or a house and everything is hunky-dory. Well, it's not out there in the real world. And when you just produce these cut-and-paste procurement plans that should be aligning with service delivery and should be aligning with the priorities of the people of Brisbane but aren't, we're going to continue to go backwards at a very fast rate, and that's a very devastating thing for the people of Brisbane.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Further speaker on item C. Councillor Allen.
Mr Deputy Chair, my rise to speak on item C, the adoption of SP 103, the Procurement Policy and Plan 2025-2026. Brisbane City Council's Procurement Policy and Plan outlines the strategic framework for how council manages its procurement activities, ensuring alignment with our legislative requirements and whilst keeping our broader organisational goals in mind. Council's procurement policy and plan is guided by the sound contracting principles, including being leaders in procurement practice, value for money, open and effective competition, development of competitive local business and industry, protection of the environment, ethical behaviour and fair dealing, and sustainability. Now, I wanted to specifically speak to this item and particularly reference the River Stage Revitalisation Project. This is mentioned in Appendix B of the submission and under market assessments, significant and other contracts. Mr Deputy Chair, as I mentioned last week, River Stage is one of Australia's most iconic music venues, and the Shirena Council are now looking to make it even better. We will seek a private partner to upgrade and operate the River Stage in time for the Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games, ensuring these costs aren't passed on to the ratepayers and renters of the city. Later this month, an expression of interest campaign will commence seeking proposals from experienced venue operators. These venue operators will be asked to submit their proposals to transform the River Stage with new and improved facilities coupled with state-of-the-art sound management. The new operators will be granted a long-term lease in exchange for significant investment in the much-loved venue. The new operating model proposed will ensure the River Stage is upgraded while council funds are invested in building better roads and improving public transport, getting Brisbane residents home sooner and safer. Mr Deputy Chair, as I said last week, the River Stage will remain owned by council and continue to be available for community events. By getting a world-class venue operator involved, we will lock in significant private investment for River Stage while ensuring council funds directed, as I mentioned, to roads, transport and other uses. Brisbane remains Australia's lifestyle capital, and under this plan, the future of live music will continue to be, will continue to ensure Brisbane remains in the number-one spot. As more and more people choose to live in and visit Brisbane, a revamped River Stage will attract more people, showcasing the city's arts, culture and live music scene. I look forward to bringing the River Stage Revitalisation Project lease arrangements through council in due course, and this will ensure that the Shirena Council's vision for the site is realised and that we can ensure that Brisbane residents and visitors continue to have unforgettable memories in that location. Mr Deputy Chair, the Procurement Policy and Plan before us today aims to continue to deliver value for money for council and ultimately ratepayers, foster open competition and ensure ethical and sustainable procurement practices, and it will be used during the tender for expressions of interest of the River Stage Revitalisation Project later this month when expressions open, and I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speaker on item C. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak briefly on item C, the procurement plan, although it's very hard to call it a plan because it really does not contain a lot of detail. Now, that's a pretty basic understanding, I think, of what you would expect in a plan, that it would contain some details about the major projects council is, thank you, that council is going to undertake over the course of the next year. But unfortunately, like the council budget, the loosey-goosey LMP no longer actually, the loosey-goosey LMP no longer actually detail what they're planning to do from a financial point of view. They don't want to be accountable and transparent, and we see that in the procurement plan before us today. So, there's a couple of things that I would just like to note. Firstly, what's in here are simply lists of things, they're not projects. There's things, concrete, sand, heating, fire equipment, parking meters. There's a lot more parking meters counselling, coming councillor Chong Wah through you, Mr Deputy Chair. So, there's a lot more people going to be, unless this relates to the parking meters they've already put in, which could well be the case because we don't know, because there's no accountability in this document whatsoever. We note that, let's just see how good a plan we think this is. This is what's included in one line item in what's supposed to be our detailed plan of the contracts we're entering into.
Yes.
Roads, bridges, transport and civil works, drainage and waterways. All of those things, there would be hundreds of projects that we will deliver under that category. There will be hundreds of contracts we enter into under that category. Instead, it's listed as one item with a rough expenditure of $50 million that bears no resemblance to anything because there's nothing in the budget that it can be accounted against. There's no list of works necessarily beyond some vague things in the back of the suburban work schedule, but we don't know how much they are and what they're going to be for. So, this is not a detailed plan. This is a very basic, it'd be like the index in a book.
Yep.
That's what it is. And the index in the book, you go, well, okay, so where's the detail in the plan as to what's going to be done? There is none. And the purpose of the City of Brisbane Act regulations is to ensure that the council, that is us, has that information available to us. Now, we don't have that information because it is not in this plan. We don't have that information because during the council budget information request process, we would ask questions such as of councillor Murphy, for example, and he would not give us the answers. He would refuse to give us the answers. We would ask very clearly about, here's a good one, we would ask very clearly about footpaths, how many new footpaths will be built this year? And councillor Murphy said he didn't know and he'd get back to us and never did. So, this is the problem with the LMP. They can't answer your questions. Their statutory obligations are not being met in a transparent and accountable way. And the plan that we see before us today really is grossly inadequate and is not a fit-for-purpose plan. Now, I just want to mention a couple of little things, and particularly the River Stage Revitalisation Project. So, this is going to be what's called a significant contracting plan, which is a plan over $10 million. So, in here, building and facilities, River Stage Revitalisation Project, indicative contract value range to be determined by the tender process. Now, this means that Brisbane City Council's done no investigations about the state of River Stage, has no idea about the state of River Stage, what sort of works are needed to fix River Stage, has done no rough costings to find out how much it'll cost to fix River Stage. And basically, according to councillor Allen, the Lord Mayor, they're just putting the tender out to the private sector.
Yes.
Who can say whatever they want to council, and we've heard from councillor Allen here today, he looks forward to giving them a long-term lease.
Yep.
We don't know in here how this process is supposed to unfold because there is no information in the contracting plan. This plan should have information about the expected cost of revitalising the River Stage, and it does not do so. I suspect that information is available to the LMP, but they don't want to put it in here.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speaker, councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chair, and I rise to speak on item C, the Procurement Policy and Plan. As been said, the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 requires that council makes and adopts a procurement policy and reviews it annually along with a contracting plan for each financial year. The policy and plan provides detailed information about council's procurement activities, ensuring council and ratepayers receive quality services and infrastructure with value for money at the forefront. It's all about giving fair and equitable access to tender while flagging what's coming up this year for contracts and tendering. Deputy Chair, starting with clause C attachments, C regarding procurement contracts for 2425 and a number of significant projects, last year's version of the policy I'll speak about. Among them was the work that we did through our ecosystem restoration projects, which delivered 6.3 hectares of work and planted more than 37,000 plants across the programme last financial year. And some of the projects delivered included the restoration of four hectares at Pries Pocket Road in Moghl and two hectares along the Belimba Creek corridor in Mansfield. And we also removed 636 tonnes of weeds from 15 key water bodies under the Aquatic Regimen Management Contract Component, and this work is undertaken using a combination of methods, including mechanical harvesting equipment, hand removal herbicides and biological control. The next procurement plan was for arborist advisory services, and this is our panel of high-quality arboricultural providers who provide us specialist tree assessments for council's projects and residents. The advisory services fell into two specialist categories. One was the professional inspection and analysis of tree conditions and the surveying of our trees for inventory-keeping purposes so we can keep track of our urban canopy. In the 2425 financial year, the concrete drainage structures component of this procurement report related to our stock of pre-cast drainage projects for upgrades across the city, and this includes pipes, culverts, manholes and lint tools which are used in maintenance, stormwater system projects and during major road upgrades such as the Moghl Road transformation at Indrapili. And this is just one small aspect of the broader drainage programme, which last year we spent more than $100 million on. So, this covered everything from the design, planning, building and maintenance of the drainage network, totaling more than 4,000 kilometres of pipes and 90,000 drains. Manu Chair, the report for 2425 also included the procurement plan for the construction of the Civil Bridge and Building Catalyst Works for Victoria Park. As with this whole document, this was just an indication of the value of contracts we were expecting to put out for procurement last year while we were still pursuing the original master plan for Victoria Park. But of course, we had to hit the pause button because of the stadium, there was a decision made around the stadium, which is now supported by the three levels of government. But until that decision was made earlier this year, it was business as usual for our Victoria Park master plan. We had the South East Queensland City Deal to help us with that, and this was a $1.8 billion partnership between all three levels of government. And one of the primary initiatives of the SEQ Liveability Fund, which included $120 million investment into Victoria Park, with each of the levels investing $40 million. So, this funding was earmarked for the catalyst works, but as I said, due to the stadium decision, we didn't go ahead with the procurement and did not spend any of the $70 million. In fact, there isn't $70 million, this was a projected amount. Over the last six months, we've been working though close with all of our partners to close out some of the intended works, but as you know, Deputy Chair, there's some fantastic projects that were undertaken and built in the Victoria Park precinct, which I know the local residents and those outside of that local area are enjoying. With regards to playgrounds, the contract for outdoor activity and associated services, this procurement activity is to replace the current corporate procurement arrangement, which is due to expire in February next year. And the scope of the procurement under the new contract will cover equipment for playgrounds, exercise, dog parks, equipment and outdoor games at fitness, shade structures and surfacing. Lots happening this year, looking forward to delivering.
Further speaker, councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item C, Procurement Policy and Plan for 2025-26. I note that under Appendix B, Construction and Operations, a significant contracting plan for the term side aquatic centre redevelopment project is listed. On page 11, under, sorry, on page 11, under Appendix B, Market Assessments, Significant and Other Contracts, the indicative contract value range for the term side aquatic centre redevelopment project is a whopping $50 to $17 million. The exact amount this council's contributing to this project is commercial and confidence, and it's still unknown. Handing over many millions of dollars to provide private sector profits is not good management of public money. As I said in these chambers on the 12th of August, why isn't this LMP administration retaining this asset in public hands, investing in the upgrades, maintenance and operations instead of privatizing it to the benefit of private sector? Because it's illucitive for the corporations to do business with government. A principal concern with PPPs is the lack of accountability and transparency with associated contracts and ultimately ratepayers paying for private sector profits. We can see with this project exactly that a lack of transparency and clarity on how much the council is giving away. Handing over public assets to a private enterprise is not in the best interest of the public, as in this case, a pill entry cost may be priced to be out of reach for many families due to rising housing costs and cost of living. These public-private partnerships, or PPPs, are being promoted by the LMP council administration as a win-win partnership to both the public and private sector. This is a story propagated by a radical LMP administration that wants to privatize all council services. PPPs in reality are an expensive, ineffective and corruption-prone way of financing infrastructure and services, with the public taking all the risks. Queens Wharf is a perfect example of why these PPPs are not in the public's best interest. Queens Wharf is a perfect example of why these PPPs are not in the public's best interest. The Greens believe everyone should be able to access all public pools and facilities without breaking the bank. As Brisbane expands to accommodate our growing population, we are seeing this LMP administration selling off or gifting away our public spaces to private companies or developers, and new public spaces rarely being acquired. Victoria Park Butterburn, Mount Coother Forest Park, Howard Smith Walls. This LMP council is committed to giving away our public spaces, green space and public assets to their developer mates. We know many wealthy developers and corporates are now lining up for the big slice, the Olympics money train that is arriving in Brisbane. A money train of public money that the council and the state LMP are keen to give away to their mates. Now, on a positive note, the Milton Street and Croydon Street project is also listed in this procurement plan, a project that is complementary to the Sylvan Road separated bike lanes project. I'm pleased to see anticipated funding of ten to thirty million allocated in this procurement and policy plan twenty-five, twenty-six. Our community and bike user groups have been fighting hard for this project for over ten years. Many cyclists have been injured on this street, with national media reporting on how unsafe this road is for cyclists. The Greens have had a firm commitment listing thirteen high priority corridors for separated bike lanes. One of those high priority separated bike lanes listed is Sylvan Road. The Milton Road, Croydon Street, Morley Street intersection upgrade will improve safety for all road users and improve access to Sylvan Road, ultimately making it safer for bike users travelling on Sylvan Road. It just shouldn't have taken this long.
Further speaker, councillor Strong.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Chair. Yeah, I rise to speak on item C, the, um, uh, procurement policy, such as it is. Um, and, uh, I'll try to keep it local, uh, which the Lord Mayor always asks us to do, keep it local. Sadly, he's not here to hear me. Uh, he's gone elsewhere. He's A O W L. Checked out. Anyways, but the, the deputy mayor is here and she's always here. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, for staying in the chamber and, uh, having listened to us. Anyways, in regards to the, um, the policy, I, I wanted to keep it local in regards to an item which you, you would think was very insignificant, but it's called fencing. And, uh, um, obviously we have a panel, uh, that, that look after that particular item, uh, whether it's, um, in our parks or along the roads or wherever. Um, and, uh, but we, I've been having troubles over the years to try to, uh, get some fencing either repaired or installed. Uh, now, I, obviously there's just not the flexibility in the policy, right? Because you would think pool-type fencing or galvanised fencing, which have been around for decades, right, wouldn't be an issue, but it is. We had a pool-type fence which was installed in front of the two high schools to try to keep the kids from flowing over the road and along Forest Lake Boulevard into the shopping centre, specifically McDonald's, uh, and, uh, to try to keep them safe. Now, uh, we had it all installed and what happened, some car took a, you know, a couple of panels out. Do you know how long it took for that to be procured? Four months. Four months. And how do we know this? Because I kept bringing up our outcomes manager and I was saying, why is it taking so long? They don't have the fencing. Okay, all right. So then we have, then we have a refuge that was installed, right, in, um, in Joseph Banks College Avenue, which was galvanised. You know, basic galvanised fencing, you know, the stiff type stuff, you know, that's little squares. Anyways, it's been, uh, taken out by truck, I would think, or a big vehicle, three times. And every time it gets taken out, well, the last, the first two times it got taken out, it was taking months to get fixed. Now, it wasn't all that expensive type fencing, but it had to be, it had to be fixed. And, uh, and again, I asked the question, why isn't it done? And, and they'd have to say, the fencing's not available. And I'm thinking, I'm pretty sure that I could probably get a hold of Bunnings, right? And they've done, and, and they would have had the fencing for either, either one of those, uh, projects. Um, but, um, anyway, so obviously the panel, now we go local. We're saying that we buy local, eighty-five percent local, keeps coming up, uh, all the time. And, uh, but, and, and I'm wondering, well, why is it, why is it so hard to get something as basic as fencing that is seen all around the city? And, uh, so I just don't, I think there needs to be more flexibility in the procurement, right? And I don't know how you go about doing that. I'm just raising it here during the debate, saying we should have a look at that. And if we do have that flexibility, maybe the panel should be extended, right? And make, uh, make, make more suppliers available to supply for our projects. Um, I just want to touch on the digital media, um, aspect of the procurement uh, in regards to, um, the Living in Brisbane. Now, we keep delivering Living in Brisbane's hard copies in the mailboxes every month. Now, we've had it, we've had digital copy available in Living in Brisbane for as, probably as long as I've been a councillor, maybe not quite as long, but as long. Why have we transitioned just to an electronic copy? Why are we still printing copies with paper from trees, right? Costing a fortune, you know, uh, in my word alone, because it goes by Australia Post. And that's probably just in my word alone, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars just to do a distribution. Now, we probably get a little bit cheaper than that, uh, being that we're such a big council. But that's what I, what I pay, uh, if, if I distribute a newsletter. So I think it's, it's about time, uh, we transition, uh, get with the program in regards to updating the way that we deliver our, uh, deliver our, uh, Living in Brisbane.
Councillor Strong, your time has expired. Further speaker, it says, oh, oh, councillor Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I rise to speak on item C, the annual procurement plan and policy. The policy and plan provides information about council's procurement activities, ensuring council and ratepayers receive quality services and infrastructure with value for money at the forefront. Now, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, council's local spend, that's okay? Sorry, councillor, I believe your mic is on. Um, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, council's local spend sat at sixty-seven percent. As councillors are aware, our Shrinna Council has an eighty percent buy local policy. And I'm very pleased to note that in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, our local spend was just over eighty-two point five percent. Now, this is not only above our target, but a clear reflection of our Lord Mayor's vision and the commitment of our procurement team, together with the hard work of local Brisbane businesses. The policy backs Brisbane businesses, ensuring local suppliers are given the best opportunity to deliver council services and projects. Our buy, our buy local policy is delivering real outcomes for local industries, and it's something the business community can be proud of as they contribute directly to improving the city they call home. On top of this, a weighting of thirty percent is applied to reflect local benefits for procurement activities over five hundred thousand dollars or more. And we provide opportunities to make it easier for small businesses to be a supplier to council through improved payment terms. This is a large, diverse organisation, and we make no apologies for prioritising local and small businesses to help deliver the services and infrastructure needed across our suburbs, consistent with our Lord Mayor's Suburbs First Guarantee. Now, Madam Chair, this council is committed to giving Brisbane businesses every chance to succeed. And a good example of that is our towing services, which is actually on page thirteen of the documents. Now, while it may not be the most visible service, it is the day-to-day functions that make a big difference to the safety, accessibility and congestion across our city. The towing contract is worth one point four million dollars this year and covers the removal of vehicles that block traffic, abandon cars and critical support during emergencies. Abandoned and hazardous vehicles are a problem that every large city face, faces. Towing also plays a critical role in keeping our clear ways, you guessed it, clear. With more than six hundred residents moving to Brisbane each week, traffic flow is more important than ever. And it's important to see and acknowledge in our procurement plan today. I do want to shout out to, uh, the procurement committee and just acknowledge that the changes that they have made in the emergency procurement exemption are really, really important. And as the former Chair of City Standards, when our city is in disaster, these procurement arrangements are critical for us to be able to get our city back up and running as quickly as possible. So thank you so much for taking on board our feedback and really making sure that we're able to get back to business as quickly as possible. I commend this report to the chamber.
Further speaker, councillor Griffith.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item C. Also, and the previous speaker talked about quality and value. Uh, I see neither quality or value in this report. Uh, it really concerns me, um, uh, the, uh, the sheer lack of detail, the lack of transparency and the lack of accountability. And I think that is a direct result of, of this administration being in power for twenty-two years. We have seen, um, that the LMP in this chamber change the rules so that they can control the chamber. Well, similarly, they're changing the rules in relation to this item and giving less and less information, not just for the people in this chamber, but for residents who are paying, uh, paying their hard-earned rates to run this council. Um, what we do know is the LMP have got us into over five billion dollars' worth of debt. Five billion dollars' worth of debt. They've given away a one point five billion asset that they have built to the state government without any recompense. And we have lost four hundred and fifty permanent staff, um, since, uh, the beginning of this term. We have lost four hundred and fifty permanent staff since the beginning of the term. It is no wonder nothing's getting done out there in the suburbs. The LMP is not delivering value for money, and I'd like to give a few local examples. For myself, it was building a BMX track, uh, for the, uh, the young people of Salisbury. Originally quoted for this installation to go in was a hundred thousand dollars. Six months later, the quote came back and it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Same track. So that is a massive increase in the cost of that, of doing that piece of, uh, play equipment for those kids, and just incredible. No one has been able to explain to me why the jump in that, um, why the jump in the expenditure of that. But let's get to something a bit more basic, a bit more local. What about, um, spending forty thousand dollars on a tap in a park? Does anyone here think that forty thousand dollars is a reasonable amount to pay for a tap in a park? I don't. The public don't. It wasn't coming from very far. It was not coming from very far. It was Mainz Lines, yeah. It was not coming very far. Forty thousand dollars to put a tap in a park. This is, this is what the LMP hails as great financial management. This is what the LMP hails as doing a really good job. Anyone that I raise this with just gets disgusted and horrified. More recently, and I've, I've asked for this, because dog days are put on for councillor Howard and councillor Cunningham. Yeah, free dog days put on and organised by the parks teams. Um, and I asked for information, asked for information on, on those dog events and was told I'm not able to get it. So I'm not sure why councillor Howard and councillor Cunningham are able to, in the mysterious way, get an event that no other councillors are able to get. Yep. Other councillors, like councillor Kim, have used their LMCF funds. I'm not sure if other liberal councillors think, liberal National Party councillors think it's appropriate that two of their councillors get these events, and they don't get these events. I certainly, uh, as someone who sits on the opposition side, don't think that is fair, equitable or reasonable. Might be sneaky and it might be cunning and it might be a little laugh, um, for those councillors. But I don't think that is fair. I don't think that is equitable. I don't think that's reasonable. And I also think, uh, it shows to me that the organisation isn't being fair, equitable or reasonable in how it's distributing funds like this. So I remain really concerned about this. The LMP aren't delivering quality and they're not delivering value. And frankly, Brisbane deserves so much better than this crew.
Further speaker, councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Um, I rise to speak to item C. Uh, this item might not come with fanfare, but it is one of those quiet enablers that helps us deliver the things our residents care about most. Whether it's upgrading a community hall, revitalising our local parks and green spaces or supporting the artists and organisations that bring Brisbane's culture to life. None of it happens without good procurement behind the scenes. Now, this plan gives us the structure to do that well. And it's not just about compliance, it's about making sure that we're backing local suppliers, supporting inclusive practices and delivering value for Brisbane residents. Importantly, this plan continues our strong record of supporting social enterprises, businesses that deliver positive change for our city. And last financial year, this Shrinna Council invested more than eleven million dollars directly with social enterprises, multiplying the benefits for Brisbane communities. This isn't just a number. It's real jobs, real opportunities and real impact for people who need it most. Within this plan, we're not just maintaining that commitment. We're setting ourselves up to do even more, making it easier for social enterprises to work with council and to help build a city where everyone can contribute and thrive. This plan also helps us deliver on our Olympic commitments, ensuring that we prepare for twenty thirty-two, we're investing in community infrastructure and cultural programming that leaves a lasting legacy. The procurement policy and plan also supports our reconciliation action plan, embedding opportunities for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander businesses to be part of council's supply chain. And that matters deeply to us because reconciliation isn't just a word in a strategy document. It's something we live through, our actions as the Shrinna Council. It's about creating real opportunities, supporting First Nations-led enterprises and making sure that our city's growth includes everyone. It is not tokenistic. It's something we live through our actions as the Shrinna Council. We know that real reconciliation means creating real opportunities. That's why this plan actively supports First Nations-led enterprises, not just in principle, but in practice. It's about making sure Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander businesses are part of the way we build, maintain and celebrate our city. Whether it's a local Indigenous catering business providing for a community event or a First Nations small business enriching the amazing services we offer across Brisbane, this plan makes space for those partnerships to thrive. Not as a gesture, but as a genuine part of how we build a stronger, more inclusive city. Because we're not just about delivering services. We're backing the people and businesses that reflect Brisbane's story. We're celebrating the talent, culture and contribution of our rich Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities, and we're making sure that our city's growth includes everyone. So while it might not grab headlines, this plan helps us deliver the kind of city we all believe in, an inclusive, vibrant and community-focused Brisbane. I'm proud to support it and I commend item C to the chamber.
Further speaker, councillor Macy.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak briefly on this item about procurement. And I know that there's been various conversations, but there's just a couple of things that I would like to put on the record. Um, and we know how important procurement is for this city. Procurement is, um, supposed to be the transparent tool that we get contracts and contracts attended. Um, it's supposed to be value for money and it's supposed to be delivering, um, as we see through the documentation, um, the greater good for our communities. Something I did want to highlight, however, which seems to be a bit of, very evident in this documentation and is the shift that is so publicly being talked about, is the shift to private-public partnerships. I'm going to talk about that specifically under the product category on page eleven. I'm going to talk about that specifically under the product category on page 11, because this is really important, because in this page, on page 11, there are four contracts. And they're all significant contracts, Milton Road, Croydon Street, Chirmside Aquatic Centre, and River Stage Revitalisation Project, and also Polara Distick Sports Park. What's incredible is 50% of these projects for our Brisbane City Council-owned assets, our community assets, are undeniably public-private partnerships. And we'll go further in that, because here it says the expected quarter at the market. And I think something really interesting about this paper, and this is all about the kind of transparency and the knowledge that we can have on these significant contracts, is firstly, the indicative cost, and for anything that's listed in this area, there is an indicative cost range of 20 million, which is crazy, particularly when you look at the fact that the expected deliverer of these tenders to market are either in the first quarter, which we're about to finish, or the second quarter. And that's what I think a lot of opposition councillors are talking about when they talk about transparency and they talk about specifics. Here we have four major contracts, without the information about River Stage Revitalisation plans, these contracts total on the upper end of 130 million plus River Stage, at the lower end of 70 million. They're going to go to market either now already, in the next couple of weeks, or in the second quarter. And in the procurement document that's needed to publicly go out and procure these items, the indicative cost is, there's a huge gap of 20 million. And that's why it's important to speak about this stuff. It's important that we are able to have these debates in chambers, because we are talking not just about a procurement policy, but in these papers, in Attachment A and Attachment B, we're talking about the priorities of the LMP council for procurement, particularly significant procurement during the next period. And it's clear, when you look at these documents, and you see that 50% of the significant projects are private-public partnerships, that the council is using this tool because, and I'll say it clearly, it's run out of money to manage its own assets. And we know we're shifting towards this kind of model, because it's not just these projects, but as through you, Chair, was announced earlier today, the pontoons on the river that were built for community use, and the idea of their public privatisation. Of course, none of this will ever go to community consultation, of course, none of this will be conversations with any, anyone else, of course, we will just talk about these in chambers and we'll have a vote, and by the time a resident understands what's actually happened to these either beloved assets, these used assets, these special assets, it'll be too late. And that's what I see in these documents, and that's what I see in the attachments in the procurement plan. Yes, the substantive in both contracts has barely changed, but when you look into the attachments, you can see what the actual plan is and the momentum is from this Liberal Council. And I'm telling you, it's because they've run out of money.
Any further speaker, councillor Wines.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair. Look, I rise to speak to Item C, the procurement plan. The first thing I feel the need to do is defend our pool lessees, who have come under a bizarre attack by the Green Party. The Chirmside Pool is due an upgrade, we are proceeding to deliver that upgrade. The best outcomes I've seen for quality public pool delivery in this city are when a committed lessee works with this council to commit, to deliver an excellent outcome for the community. And I think of few better examples than the Newmarket Pool, where we, the council, have a wonderful relationship with the Miller family, who have put their own money into the Newmarket Pool to make it the second most popular, and some years the most popular pool in this city. Langland's Pool, deputy mayor, involves a commitment from local lessees, who are local people, who are committed to delivering a quality outcome. And to say, as councillor Chong Wah did, that dealing with these relationships is likely to lead to corruption, was appalling. It was outrageous. These are, the people who run our pools, by and large, are very good people, who deliver a wonderful product for our city, and they're enjoyed, again, looking into the crystal ball of the things that you would expect at Chirmside would not be dissimilar to what we have at Newmarket. The lessees put their money in to put the waterslide in, to put the hydrotherapy pool in, to make it more appealing for families, to make it more appealing for people who need that sort of support, and to have them, to have them, to have councillor Chong Wah allege corruption through their involvement is actually pretty, pretty poor, pretty poor by her. Also, the idea that, responding to councillor Cassidy earlier in the, earlier in the evening, the idea that my comments regarding my, my high opinion of Giorgio's are because of some non-council activity is not true. Giorgio's were an excellent partner through the Mogal Road project, they chose to partner with us, they shared offices with us, so that we could deliver the best outcome for the city. They could have chosen an adversarial contractor, contractor-contractee relationship, and they did not. And that is one of the reasons that the project came in at the quality that it was, over the time that it was. To allege anything else is, again, disgusting. And again, the attack on the 330, I forget which councillor made this, made this allegation against the 330, but I tell you this, the reason the 330 has seen a reduction in use is many people who use the 330 would catch it between RBWH and the city, and they're choosing the metro vehicle, because it's more appealing, it's more, it comes more often, and it's, it's more convenient, and people are choosing our vehicle. They think it's really good. And not just us, the Sustainability Council, which councillor Cassidy, again, appallingly referred to as Office Works. These are serious community, these are serious construction industry people, these are serious design people, and his need to diminish anything that he doesn't know personally is a demonstration of his own deep and sincere limitations, which we see here, week in, week out, that he comes in this place and attacks everybody else, when really all it is, is showing his own shortcomings and his own frustrations. So, I would ask him to learn more about the ISC, and learn more about the metro project, which has served, served this city, which has begun serving this city very well, and will continue to do so for many, many years. Now, as I say, the procurement plan and policy before us is about leadership and innovation, setting a standard for leadership within local government procurement, with a clear focus on a digital transformation and continuous improvement. It's about value for money, introducing a robust value-for-money index, ensuring every dollar spent balances quality, price, and broader community benefit. We also have a local buyer policy, which has been well-adheed to and has supported many local businesses to deliver outcomes for the community. We are targeting $30 million savings in procurement through competition. Now, it's important that the purpose of procurement is to provide a fair and balanced playing field for people who wish to do business with us, but an opportunity for us to get the best price for product. Sometimes I think that's lost on people, that the objective here is to provide a portal for competition to allow council to put downward pressure on prices that are presented to us. That's one, that is one of the principal objectives. The other main one is fairness for those who submit applications to us.
Further speakers. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise today to speak on Item C of the ENC report, the SP103 Procurement Policy and Plan 2526. Madam Chair, this item outlines council's procurement plan for the year ahead to deliver for Brisbane residents. There are a few key items in the infrastructure space that I'd like to touch on, notably some of our roads and intersection upgrades. Firstly, the next stage of the Beams Road upgrade, stretching from Castle Grove Avenue to Hanford Road is a critical improvement for traffic flow and safety, as you well know. Council has already delivered Beams Road upgrade Stage 1A, and now we're getting on with the job of delivering Stage 1B in partnership with the federal government. I'd like to acknowledge the federal government for their support in this important road project. This project will involve widening the roadway to provide a consistent median separated four-lane carriageway, extending culverts across Cabbage Tree Creek, constructing a new shared pedestrian underpass, and upgrading sections of shared path on Beams Road, and upgrading two bus stops on Beams Road. The Beams Road upgrade will help improve safety for all road users and reduce congestion on the north side. Already, more than 20,000 vehicles travel over Beams Road each day, and nearby suburbs are only expected to grow in population over time, as we well know. The Beams Road upgrade will deliver important safety improvements for all road users, reduce traffic congestion, and improve travel time and reliability. Another major road project that's included in this procurement plan is the Lindham Open Level Crossing, which councillor Gibney wants to hear about. Council in partnership with the state and federal government is upgrading this crossing in Wynne West to improve safety for all road users. We're progressing the design to upgrade the Lindham Rail Crossing, following community feedback and further technical investigations. We've also been working with Queensland Rail to integrate our road network and their rail infrastructure in the design to minimise impacts on the community during construction. Finally, Madam Chair, there's the Milton Road and Croydon Street intersection upgrade. I look forward to seeing these important projects progress and keeping the community informed as we get underway. I commend these to the chamber.
Further speakers. No further speakers, we'll now put Item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to Item E.
Division.
Division call by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Kim. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 14 in favour and seven abstentions.
That is carried, councillors, please resume your seats. Well, now move to Item E, further speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item E is a significant contracting plan for the application of herbicide application services. The plan seeks approval to proceed with a public tender to establish a corporate procurement arrangement to deliver herbicide application services across our city. The existing arrangement commenced on the 1st of July 2018 and is due to expire on the 30th of June 2026. The SCP ensures continuity, improvement in service delivery, and service delivery beyond that date. This is one of those core council responsibilities, Madam Chair, making sure that weeds are managed across roads, footpaths, and public spaces. But it's also specialist work, and it takes trained experts to ensure that it is delivered safely. Currently, external contractors treat over 7.5 million square metres of footpath and more than 12,000 kilometres of roads and bikeways multiple times each and every year. This is a significant operational undertaking, but it's one for which we are at also the mercy of the weather. Our contractors need to be able to scrape up and down when required, especially after periods of heavy rainfall and high humidity when weed growth is at its greatest. Our strategy targets weed growth in high-traffic areas such as concrete curb and channel, roads, footpaths, and bikeways, which are all vulnerable to rapid vegetation encroachment. Regular herbicide application prevents asset deterioration, reducing the need for costly repairs, and prolonging the lifespan of our infrastructure. It's also important for maintaining the health of our local environment. There are some who would suggest that we shouldn't weed at all, they take an issue with herbicide. But Brisbane is the most biodiverse capital city in Australia, and we have an obligation to protect it. It's critical to ensure that invasive weeds are kept under control to preserve natural ecosystems that help make Brisbane such a fantastic place to enjoy the outdoors. It also ensures that the health of our creeks and waterways are maintained, including by preventing erosion and sediment contamination. This is important work, and I can assure the chamber that it is something that we will continue to focus on, and I commend the item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on this item for a couple of reasons. First of all, weeding, of course, as the deputy mayor said, is a very important task that needs to be done in the city. We are a subtropical climate, moving towards to a tropical climate, I think, with climate change. And so, we need to be able to bring the weeds under control. And sadly, at the moment, the weed, weed effestation in my ward, especially in some areas, Lavender, Lavender Street's probably one of the worst ones, which has got hundreds of metres of roadway bordering on a park in, in the Anala area, that the weeds are that bad that the boom gate, the gate there actually get into the, into the, into the area is actually overgrown with weeds. It's been reported a number of times, I don't know why it hasn't been done, but it's not the only area. And most of the connector roads in the Forest Lake Ward, sorry, the Forest Lake suburb, I should say, are also, are also been neglected. You often get people bringing up and say, when are you going to clean up the verges up against the fence line down the boulevard, you know? Now, we did that about 10 years ago, and it was all cleaned up, and it was, looked really smick, it was all barked and chipped and all the rest of it, and it was that way for a number of years. But of course, without the, without the spraying, or without trying to get rid of those weeds that continued to be, continued to grow, it gets overgrown again. Now, in regards to the herbicide, listen, it's not the only way of weeding our areas, our council areas. If we have a look at Morton, 60 of their parks are now being done by steam, by heat, which is very environmentally friendly. It's not a carcinogen, right? So, you don't actually have to be covered with PPE when you're using it, or, and, and so, they, they're using it. Now, they're not, they're also using herbicides as well, but they're going towards being herbicide-free at this stage. Byron Bay, or Byron, Byron Council down in New South Wales is also using this type of treatment, as well as the Douglas Shire up north Queensland is also using it in their, in their application. I think it's something that, we're the largest city council, well, we used to be in the southern hemisphere, but Auckland sort of pipped us, but we're the largest city council, and we should be, we should be at the, we should be doing this type of weeding, right? Because we can, we can afford to purchase the equipment to actually employ this type of weeding. Now, it does cost a lot of money for the trucks and everything, and I, hopefully, hopefully, we're not, we're not ignoring this because of the cost, because the cost to the environment is, is far greater than the cost of the equipment to, to employ this new type of, of weeding. It's, it's been employed overseas, I remember doing some research some, some years ago when this came up again, and, and one of the University of Denver had been employing, and it's a very big campus, and, and they've been employing this for like 15 years. And it really, really works, right? And it's very environmentally friendly, and it's also friendly to the people that actually have to do the work, right? So, I, I just think that we're a little bit short-sighted in not employing this new type of treatment. We're behind the, we're behind times, we should catch up. Other, other, other shires and councils are using it, and we should be using it as well. So, it's really, really So it's really, really important. And it's also critically important that we keep up with the weeding, right? It's something we should be doing, but it's also something that we're not doing as well as we should be doing right across Brisbane. It's not just in my ward. I'm sure every councillor here has an issue when it comes to weeding in their wards and we should be doing everything we can to try to keep up with this job. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise to speak on item E. And as the deputy mayor mentioned, many of the herbicides that we are using maintain all of our visual spaces, our roads, our footpaths, our traffic islands. But there is a more unseen use for our herbicides. And one that I sort of hinted at in this chamber a little while ago when I mentioned that we saw the movement of koalas from Upper Kedron into Kapera. Now, that was facilitated by the use of herbicide in getting rid of okna. Okna is a quite woody bush that grows quite low to the ground and prevents the movement of animals. It gets quite dense and it has a specific way to remove it. You actually have to cut the wood and paint it with the herbicide to actually be drawn in to the timber and then down to the root. We have successfully done exactly that at the Kapera saddle and we have seen koalas move back into the gap, which in my lifetime, I don't believe they have been there. So using the use of herbicide effectively prevents and gets rid of monocultures, which can prevent the movement of our native animals. Madam Chairman, the other practical item where we use herbicides, and a very important one, especially for those wards that do border bushland or are surrounded by bushland, is for the reduction of fuel load. In places where it is not safe to light a bushfire and having the support for the fire personnel there, when there is a fire ban is another time when we use herbicides to actually prevent or reduce our fuel load. And we do this to keep our community safe, Madam Chairman. One thing that we do know is that coming into the summer season and after a good winter, the land dries out, the moisture in the ground drops a little bit and the risk of bushfire, especially in areas in my ward, specifically Upper Kedron, I do lose sleep over the bushfire risk in Upper Kedron that the state government, or the previous Labor state government deleted under the Fernie Grove Upper Kedron Neighbourhood Plan. It's important that we are able to maintain those bushfire areas and the use of those herbicides is very, very important in helping us keep those areas low in fuel load, but also to keep our residents safe. Madam Chairman, as the deputy mayor said, Brisbane is Australia's largest biodiverse capital city. We have koalas within four Ks of the CBD. We have king parrots. We have, I forget the name of them, they're those flying squirrel-looking things that the greater owls feed on up at Mount Cootha. We have animals close to our CBD that no other capital city has bar Sydney, but then you can sort of exclude Taronga Zoo as one of those places. Madam Chairman, part of us keeping our whole city clean, safe and free of the development of monocultures relies heavily on not only herbicides that we use, but also alternative methods that we have used in the past. And I take on board councillor Strunk's point about using steam, but in some cases, it is not environmentally practical. The machines that councillor Strunk speaks of do generate a lot of noise and I'm quite sure that residents of Brisbane don't really want a steam jet going off outside their window during the day. But Madam Chairman, I would encourage everyone in the chamber to support item E. It is a great initiative. It is one that keeps our city's biodiversity grand and great and I commend the item to the chamber. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item E. Firstly, I'll just say, you know, what's in front of us is presented as just another procurement strategy, the herbicide application services for our city. But in reality, it's a choice about the council that we want to be. And when I say that, do we want to keep doing business as usual, potentially spraying harmful chemicals across our streets, footpaths, bikeways, parks for another eight years? Or do we want to step up, show some leadership and actually push for safer, smarter, more sustainable ways of managing weeds? I'm just going to speak a little bit locally for a second now because we know that weed management in each ward is quite, like, I think all of us potentially have something that's not being managed. For us in the Gabba Ward, one specific area is the cat's tail in Lower Riverside Terrace. Cat's tail is, you know, can spread pretty quickly and we are now going into a second year where we've been told that the removal of this cat's tail would have to wait because the budget within Brisbane City Council does not allow for it. And that's the second year that we're waiting for that. And so I know that we do have to get on top of weeds. Weeds are very important. The climate that we're in, the rains that we're expecting. You know, we're in a situation moving now into the summer. We're not in that period yet, or the rain period, but weeds can truly take over. And then back to, I guess, the point that I'm trying to make about this procurement process. We talk about a green Brisbane, but we're still relying on chemicals. There's a throwaway line in the procurement document that talks about inviting alternatives, but the bones of the contract are pretty much written around large-scale chemical spraying. And to add further on some of the alternatives that are available, because there are and other councils are doing it, not just in Queensland, but also in other states and also in the world. Examples include the trialling and adopting of not just steam but hot water treatments, which is what Sydney's doing. Melbourne and Yarra have been trialling organic sprays made from pine oil. Across Europe, you've seen cities banned, banned certain chemicals that could be harmful and have moved towards not just, look, I'll say it, I don't think it will work here, but mechanical weed removal, but really interestingly, ground cover planting, right? Actually planting our native species in the areas, in our parks, so that they prevent weeds and also non-other toxic treatments. I know there is a project in my ward at Duddon Park. There's actually a native eucalyptus forest of about 30 that has been found and residents in that area have been trying to hand-weed that area because they found 14 native grasses. And I've been trying to work with them to enable them to, like, to hand-weed. And nothing in this Brisbane City Council, this is a project I've been working on for two years, is enabling that to happen. They're literally trying to hand-weed a eucalyptus forest in Duddon Park instead of chemical sprays and slashing by council and that's not even an option. And this is the thing, not all these methods are going to be perfect for every single weed here. Some of them may cost a little bit more at the start. They may take more planning, but they create safer public spaces, protect our waterways, pollinators and reduce our reliance on harmful chemicals. And if, as we heard earlier today, multiple times through Uchair by LNP councillors, that the procurement process that we've just passed is supposed to be a process that drives innovation and not shut it down, then why is this first procurement process that we're looking at not driving any innovation? I think Brisbane residents deserve a council that actually means what they say when they're clean and green. I think Brisbane residents deserve a council that are willing to try alternatives, to do it through pilot projects and not just commit ourselves into eight years of the same thing that we were doing in the 90s. That was 30 years ago. It's 2025. We can do better than just applying herbicides.
Councillor Massey, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. Today, I rise to shed light on real stories from real residents in relation to council's herbicide programme that lags, especially in forgotten areas in Calamba Ward. We heard earlier today from councillor Strunk about where we could go moving forward with this programme, but I will also address and shed light on some issues that we've had over the past year with weeds in our area in Calamba Ward, especially with being the furthest south, just sharing a border with Logan City Council. This is a number one area where if residents aren't going and then logging the job in the system, it's an area that's easily forgotten. I've got photos today to give an example. This is one of them on Trinity Way here. You can see that drivers are trying to get out onto the motorway and they actually can't see because of all the weeds and the long grass. It's a hazard for them. In fact, if the council thinks that this isn't a real story, the LNP admin, because I know that the administration like to pretend that residents are exploited, as councillor Wine said in previous meetings. Well, they've said, hey guys, does anyone know who to contact in regards to road maintenance for the Trinity Way and Mount Leighton Z Highway entry? As weeds have grown quite aggressively within that area, interfering with visibility on that ramp which includes the entryway to our state. The new walkway to the other side of Stretton is great and many of us have enjoyed it, but in a short period of rainy weather, weeds have taken over. It is quite disheartening to see the entry of our state in this condition. In response to that, another resident, had an accident at that intersection because of the blind spot that is created. I stopped and both my daughter and I didn't see anyone coming. Next minute, there's headlights as we're halfway through and then bam, not very cool at all. Council should definitely be held accountable for any accidents had when they haven't maintained that area and let it all overgrow. Now, in response to that comment, embarrassing. We have friends that come from all over Brisbane, interstate and overseas and gives such a bad impression of what type of community we are. It's already hard to deal with the amount of junk food, rubbish and empty food and empty alcohol bottles through that end of Trinity Way. Now, with this roadside maintenance condition is just horrible. Given we are going to be an Olympic city in 2032, it's a shame that this is how residents are feeling on the ground with the way that our maintenance is being done. Not only to mention that, but here's another bench. This one is an Alderstah. Not only is it an old bench for a bus stop, but there's also weeds and bushes growing through the bench. This is in the same area where I see kids sitting on the ground on their way to school in the morning. They're sitting down, exposed to the sun, waiting for the bus. And not only are we lacking in public infrastructure, but we're not even maintaining the bushes and the trees around them and letting our kids who are waiting to get on the bus be exposed to this. We saw already in Polara that we were promised two bus stops at the last budget and that hasn't even been delivered either. Yet, the current assets that we do own, we're not even maintaining. And the bushes and the trees and everything around them are still lagging until it comes too late, until somebody gets injured or somebody gets hurt. And that philosophy really needs to change and this motion that's been put today isn't enough to change the precedent that we've set as a council, as a LNP regime that's been running for 20 years. Most recently, in my area, residents have resorted to volunteering to make sure our streets are clean. So just before school at the start of this year in January, a father and son went out of their way and then they picked out all the weeds from the footpath, posted it on Facebook so that residents can enjoy and have a nice trip to go to school. So we say thanks. It shouldn't be up to volunteers on the ground to do the job of what Brisbane City Council should be doing, but there are people out there who are volunteering their own time to do that. We did that during clean-up as well. During Cyclone Alfred, we had our scouts out there. We have a very hard-working community who puts in everything they can to try and make sure that we have an area that we're proud to live in. But the council policy and the standards and the maintenance and ultimately the funding, that's the responsibility of this LNP council, just isn't there to match that. So it's a real shame that this is happening. I'm sure councillor Griffiths has much more, he's got much more examples in his ward and that'll be coming up next. So thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Oh, Madam Chair, I thought someone would stand up from the other side and have something to say on this, but no. I rise to speak about this item as well and weed management is very important and very neglected across the city and it has been for some time and it seems to be getting worse. What I see us doing as a council is we do this green veneer and it seems to go with the various veneers that this administration has, whether it's the veneer of being disability-friendly or the veneer of not being homophobic. These veneers sit with this council. And to me, this is core business of council. This is like our 101 stuff and it's stuff we're not doing. So this morning, I went for a drive, seeing this item up and I thought, I'll get a few pictures so they're fresh, so they've been taken today, so that no one can tell these were old and these have been done. And I will table them at the end of the time I've been speaking. I'll also give a set to the chairperson. I suppose for me, the first start of dealing with weeds in my ward has been the officers doing the blame game. No, it's them. No, it's them. That person does it. That person does it. No one knows who does it. It's not us. It's always someone else and it's, oh, we haven't got the budget. So it gets a bit tiring and years and years of this gets a bit tiring. So I pulled up a few sites to demonstrate what's going on out there in the suburbs. The first one is Granar Wetlands. This is a site we've been working on for 20 years. In fact, when I first came to council, we began planting this site up. It's a park. It's a council park and it was like a tip then. And I started putting money into it, then Oxy Creek Catchment Association got involved. Then we got Enerjex on and they funded the site for three years for us to rehabilitate it. OCA brought their volunteers in and then schools got involved. Then the Sushi Foundation got involved, the Buddhists, the good old Buddhists were out there doing things. And then the corporate community got involved. So there's been, over 20 years, a lot of effort going to this site. But over those 20 years, we've also been told the site is contaminated. And whose responsibility was it to pay, to plant and weed the contaminated site? I was informed by officers it was my responsibility and I was given a SEF fund where I had to pay $50,000 to get this site weeded and maintained. How many LNP councils have paid $50,000 to get any of their sites weeded and maintained? Zero. Zero. Anyway, $50,000 for that. This is the other side of the site, completely overgrown with weeds. So what we have is 20 years, we've done a lot of work. It's been part of Campbell Newman's Two Million Trees Programme. We've planted a lot of trees. We've been highly successful, but there are a lot of weed species in there and we can't just expect volunteers to be removing them. So OCA has stepped back and said, we can't do all this work. We need council to do some work. And I'm trying. I'm trying really hard to get council to do some work, but they won't. No, it's not us, councillor. There's no money. Oh, it's hard to do, councillor. Oh, you have to go and talk to news. And news goes, you have to go and talk to those people. So what we have at the moment is a very neglected site and it's our responsibility. It's council's responsibility. Another site, this one is Lions Park at Maruka. Once again, neglected, covered in weeds, state weeds. There's another thing that came out of council, from council officers. Apparently, we don't worry so much about weed species anymore because they changed the legislation from saying we must remove it to we should remove it. And Brisbane City Council jumped in there and goes, well, we don't have to remove it. Well, not in Labor wards, anyway. This is one of my favourite, Cracknell Gully. We've got a Wipeout Weeds Programme there. We used to. The weeds, the Wipeout Weeds signs, covered in weeds. Covered in weeds. It says it all to residents. Now, I also did a drive-through some of the adjoining wards and I found in the adjoining wards lots of weeds over their infrastructure too and that's why I'm surprised those councillors aren't standing up tonight. We need to do so much better and, you know, this council has got a long way to go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'll give it a go in speaking. What we've just heard and some examples here that councillor Kim and councillor Griffiths have given and the examples that councillor Griffiths has from LNP wards, you really would think that LNP councillors might get up and contribute to this. would think that LNP councillors might get up and contribute to this, certainly should behind the scenes if they're not allowed to at council meetings. In standing up and saying, something's going wrong here, when we get a new procurement plan, a significant contracting plan come to council, which is the main vehicle on which council will address weeds out in the suburbs of Brisbane and in that significant contracting plan, the kicker's in there, which explains why we have the issues that have been raised by councillor Strunk and councillor Griffiths and councillor Kim, is that in there it says, Chair, there is no anticipated change in the CKC spraying programme or other herbicide application services and as such, the anticipated expenditure remains at three point three seven million per annum with increases in line with CPI and Wage Price Index. So they have admitted that it's a business as usual approach despite all of the evidence. All they need to do is to get into their council-funded cars, their ratepayer-funded cars and drive around their wards, Chair, and they will, if they don't, you can't see weeds from the window of a plane, you can't see weeds from the window of a plane, but you can from your ratepayer-funded car. And so with all of that and Chair, it's all through your ward as well and adjoining my ward, you see all of that money that gets put into Cabbage Tree Creek, weed maintenance each and every year over the last ten years has been static. No increase in funding for ten years to clean out weeds in Cabbage Tree Creek and it's no wonder that council officers and contractors can't get on top of this work when it's being starved of funding by the LNP. They know that there's a problem out there, they know it, they can't not know that there's a problem here with a lack of funding to address weeds, not just in public places like we've seen here today, completely engulfing infrastructure like bus stops and public parks, but talk about our critical waterways and the kind of stuff that we see growing in waterways affecting flooding as well. And we've heard that at Stable Swamp Creek from councillor Griffiths, throwing the Zoolman Waterholes out in My Way and Cabbage Tree Creek, in the Brackenridge Ward and in the Deegan Ward. We know not enough is being put into that as it is now today and then we see in this contracting plan before us today that the LNP are anticipating no increase in activity in this area and therefore not putting any more money into it. Well, of course you can't expect an increase in spraying and weeding when you are not putting money into it. Here's an example councillor Strunk gave me, this one over at Anala, that grass has got to be two or two and a half metres tall, invasive exotic grass species. I've got the exact same ones there, all you've got to do, and I'm sure you, Chair, you spend a lot of time on my ward, you drive around Southern Street and you'd see the height of those exotic grass species encroaching into Douse Lagoon. Douse Lagoon is a Ramsar listed site, council signed that international treaty and said, we recognise that this is of Ramsar importance, this wetland, which is the corridor of the wetlands down to Morton Bay, which is also a Ramsar listed site. And a few years ago, all work stopped to remove those exotic grass species from that Ramsar site that council agreed it would maintain as a custodian because of a lack of funding being put into that. The council officers said, there is not enough money there to be able to continue to do this work. They cannot, with the levels of funding that the LNP put in, remove those exotic grass species that are choking that Ramsar listed site. And we had an opportunity here today to see an increase in funding, to show, for the LNP to show some leadership and say, they want to be a genuinely sustainable city. We don't want to be a city where we see weed species clogging our waterways, all those African, this one's in councillor Marks' ward, I mean, the weeds are growing all the way over the top of native tree species. How can we, how can we claim to be a new world city and a sustainable city when we've got a political regime in here who does not care about making it so? They are just, they just care about turning up and making up the numbers in the council chamber so the Lord Mayor can do what he wants and so he can fly where he wants and one of the things he wants to do is not at ten council meetings, unfortunately. So we don't even have the Lord Mayor in here today.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and you know, this is a beautiful city for which we have large, a larger state of bushland reserves. And anyone would think by that commentary from across the chamber, that council would be able to pick up every weed in every nook and cranny of our bushland estate. Well, Madam Chair, that's not possible. However, what we do have is the Wipeout Weeds Programme. The Wipeout Weeds Programme was established back in two thousand and three and initially it was very much a reactionary-based programme. Over time, it's developed a little more and we've taken a more strategic approach as to what areas have the most investment and over two million dollars has been put into that this year. Of around two hundred thousand is for some reactive work across, you know, across the city. It's important to note that we continue to invest in weeds or weed management, should I say. We are very proud of the fact that Brisbane is the most biodiverse capital city and that we will do what we can to ensure that weed management is appropriately supported. Madam Chair, some of the commentary from across the road from some of the councillors probably requires a bit of a response. Now, I don't live on the south side of Brisbane and I can be corrected, but I'm pretty sure that the intersection that councillor Kim was referring to is not a council intersection, it's a state road. So my question, I guess back to councillor Kim through you, is it now council's responsibility to maintain state vegetation? That's a yes from across the chamber, this is a state. I just ask, should we be looking at maintaining state vegetation? And this, well, we will look after Brisbane and we will look after the areas for which we are responsible and the state will look after the areas for which they are responsible. Now, Madam Chair, I spoke, I spoke about that we have strategic sites that we look over and the focus of this work, again, is site-based asset protection and this is with the intention of protecting the ecological values of natural areas. And these areas include places like the Boondle Wetlands, Carrawatha Forest and some smaller areas such as Bank Street Reserve. So that's not all of them, but I guess what the example is that we do large areas and we do small areas under the strategic site management. But we also have those reactive sites that I spoke about and that's about delivering emergent, delivering on emergent issues with weed management activities and also good neighbour management, that's really important as well. And so this is done with the attention of targeting specific threatening weed species, regardless of where they are encountered and today we've heard about cat's claw but also Madeira vine. Madam Chair, this is an important programme, we put funding into this programme, it comes through the Bushland Preservation Levy, it's not the only funding pool, there's also funding that comes from other programme areas particularly along the roads. So we will continue to do that, we will continue to invest and we will continue to do what we can to maintain weed management.
Thank you councillor Davis. Point of order, councillor Kim.
I claim to be misrepresented.
You can do it now, I think councillor Davis has finished, so.
Thank you Chair, previously we heard councillor Davis referencing the entire area that I referred to in my speech as state government responsibility, however, when you do actually look at the map, you'll notice that there are all other areas right along that, it's a very, very long road, it's a long estate as well, it's an intersection there, there's a lot of responsibility that does fall under council.
It's not to be debated, it's just if you believe that what councillor Davis said wasn't what you said, so moving along, any further speakers? No further speakers, we'll now put item E to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. That is carried. Councillor Wines, Public Transport Committee.
Thanks Madam Chair, I move the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the second of September twenty twenty five, be adopted.
Seconded Madam Chair.
Has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, second of September twenty twenty five, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks Madam Chair, I just speak to the report that we heard last week, so as councillors may note, our report, our presentations have been on a range of issues, some learning about the history of the things that we do in this city in the way of delivering public transport and this was one of those. So it was about our ferry system, so ferries have shaped Brisbane for nearly two centuries with the first private cross river service starting in eighteen forty-three. Our council began regulating that service not long after to ensure that it properly served the people of Brisbane. Brisbane's development of new bridges prompted longer ferry services, especially in the east of the city. One of the big changes of course though, however, was in the nineteen nineties when network fragmentation led to the launch of the City Cat Network revitalising both riverfront and our inner city. The first City Cat services were commenced in nineteen ninety-six and the tenth Gen Four City Cat will be joining our fleet in November of this year with the ability to carry up to a hundred and seventy passengers and provide panoramic reviews on both the lower and upper decks. Just so people understand where the fleet sits at, our network includes twenty-seven City Cats and five Kitty Cats, serving twenty-two terminals from UQ to North Shore Hamilton across a twenty kilometre stretch of river. The fleet boasts four generations of City Cats, there's Generation One, six vessels which can carry a hundred and fifty passengers, Generation Two, which is five vessels of the fleet which carry a hundred and sixty passengers, Gen Three, which carries seven vessels and a hundred and sixty passengers and Gen Four, which carries a hundred and seventy. The Kitty Cats, of which there are five, can each carry up to sixty passengers. Council owns all core assets, partnering with a private operator to provide service delivery as mandated under COBA. The major terminals like Southbank and Riverside account for the highest share of patronage. The top ten terminals collectively support the majority of customer flow catering both tourism, leisure, but also importantly commuter needs. Southbank is our most popular, carrying fourteen percent of all journeys. Next is Riverside with eleven percent and Northkey and Howard Smith Wolves, each with seven percent of patronage. We have seen, since the initiative of the fifty cent fares launched by the state government, we have seen patronage increased by an average of forty percent monthly. This is following on top of a comprehensive review of broad community input of more than one thousand one hundred submissions. We have put into service a high-frequency cross river Kitty Cat service for Kangaroo Point. This has also seen other services become localised, Kitty Cat services, they are Maritime Museum to QUT, Holman Street to Riverside and Dockside to Sydney Street. Our frequency has more than doubled on those services with a service provided to each of those stations every fifteen minutes, facilitating a connection, an on-platform, on-deck connection with City Cat services. That was launched on the twenty-eighth of January this year, reflecting both community feedback and operational needs analysis. The City Cat is such a popular leisure travel and tourism service that at times the demand exceeds capacity, most notably on public holidays and school holiday weekends. Now, this is what we'd call a good problem, that these are very popular and we will be, we have been working with both Translink and our service providers to address that and respond to that, that people are using these things in an increasingly high fashion. So what I would say about the usage is that as I've said in my earlier notes, it is on school holiday weekends and public holidays, people are choosing it as a recreational option and why wouldn't you? They are, it's a fun and easy day out that shows you the best, among, I should say, among the best and most beautiful parts of the city. So we are always proud of our ferry system and I have been advised that we have set a new record for patronage in the month of July with more than, bear with me, more than six hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and nineteen people using the service in the month, for fiscal month twenty-eighth of June to the first of July, the first of August, I should say. So it is for the month of July, six hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and nineteen passengers used a City Cat or Kitty Cat, showing once again its long-term appeal and that it is both an excellent commuter service, but also one that people are increasingly using for recreation. The popularity of them remains and I'm sure that there will be much interest in the launch of the new one in November and that these once again form a core part of our public transport offering.
Further speakers? Councillor Chongma.
Thank you Chair, I rise to speak on Brisbane's ferry network presentation. On the ninth of December twenty twenty-five, this LNP administration cut fifty-one daily services to the Milton Ferry Terminal with no consultation and no notice given to the community nor my office, as is standard with this LNP administration. This forty percent cut in ferry services to Milton came just four months after introduction of fifty cent fares in August last year. We know that TMR data repeated in this Transport Committee presentation that ferries experienced a dramatic increase in patronage with the fifty cent fare introduction, with figures up to forty-two point eight percent. Yet, just four months later, the LNP administration decided to slash fifty-one ferry services from Milton. This is just, this isn't just a story of the LNP's failure of forward planning, but it reflects their prioritisation, sorry, prioritisation, sorry, of wealthy corporations over everyday residents. The LNP say that this reduction at the Milton Terminal was due to accessibility improvements at Mopray Park Terminal and that terminal will be coming back online, but this isn't the real story. The real reason that this LNP administration cut services was because the council opened up Howard Smith Wolves Ferry Terminal in May twenty twenty-four, after announcing plans for a new terminal five years ago. Howard Smith Wolves is council's public-private partnership, which saw some of our most valuable heritage-listed public open space handed over to private enterprise for overpriced beers, luxury hotels and massive corporate profits. Council had at least five years to prepare the ferry network for the Howard Smith Wolves Terminal to open. Did they purchase an additional ferries required? No. They made a political choice to prioritise the profits of Howard Smith Wolves investors by instead cutting services for Milton residents trying to get to work. In justifying the massive cut in Milton's services, the administration claimed that Milton and Apollo Bay Ferry Terminals had the lowest patronage data. We know that it wasn't correct, it was usual LNP propaganda. This Transport Committee presentation makes clear that demand for City Cat ferries remains strong in Brisbane. Concerningly, the raw data shows that in six months after the LNP cut Milton's ferry services by forty percent, there was a fifty-three percent reduction in patronage from the terminal. So the administration's claim that these reductions in ferry services wouldn't have an impact is clearly propaganda. A fifty-three percent drop in patronage means that people were using the previous services. It means those ferry services that were cut must have previously had high patronage, unlike the LNP administration's propaganda. The mayor said today, if the number climbs, the LNP will resume services there. Lord Mayor through the Chair, although he's not here right now, this is an oxymoron. How can patronage increase when you cut services by forty percent? Does the Lord Mayor think that residents of Milton are stupid? Our Lord Mayor has set what he knows is an impossible task while the LNP manipulates and discriminates in order to support their corporate friends. Milton's population is growing rapidly as the LNP drives a surge in density. We need to be increasing public transport service to the area and also investing in active transport, not cutting ferry services. By making ferries less accessible, council is committing inner-city residents to an over-reliance in private motor vehicles into the future. At the same time, this council introduces expensive parking meters to ten streets in Riverside Milton because of increasing traffic and parking demands. As I said in my question to the Lord Mayor, how can this LNP council both introduce more metered park in the Riverside High Density Milton area to manage the surge in vehicles and parking demand, while at the same time cut critical public transport ferry services to the exact same area? Well, my residents in Milton know this is plain stupid and irrational and I'll be speaking to many of my residents at a street meeting this week. I have also started an online council e-petition highlighting this LNP administration's inability to manage our city's transport network.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you Madam Chair, would have been interesting if someone from that, so I'd stood up.[1799.58]
I would like to also speak on this presentation. There are a couple of things in listening to Councillor Wines that I thought might need to be corrected. The first one is, the LMP were against City Cats. You actually opposed them, you're against them, you spoke against them, they're going to cause erosion, they're going to bankrupt the city. There was a whole lot of reasons, but you're against them. So it's good to have that on the record and good to be reminded of that, and it's good to see that you support them now. I would be interested in your reply, Councillor Wines, through Madam Chair, that he admits to that history. Second thing is, it was interesting to hear Councillor Wines talk about the high-frequency City Cat for Kangaroo Point. Wow, they're getting a high-frequency Kitty Cat service plus a $300 million walkway bridge. Not a bad gig, is it? Not a bad gig. So I really am not sure whether the residents in the outer suburbs would be pleased to hear about City Cats or Kitty Cats plus a $300 million bridge. Meanwhile, the Story Bridge is falling down, collapsing, and I believe, in one of the reports I saw, catastrophic. The other thing I wanted to raise was the figures from, that the Councillor Wines was talking about in relation to the upbeat number of people on City Cats, and that's all very good. The difficulty for many people returning from the fireworks on Saturday night was they couldn't get on a City Cat or a bus or anything. And they were angry, like white-hot angry, that they couldn't do that. So where's the incompetence for that lay? Is it council? Is it Translink? Are we all going to point fingers at each other? People received a shocking service on Saturday night. And then finally, last point I'd like to make and support the previous councillor was the cutting of services to Milton is shocking. And even more shocking was not letting you know and not letting local residents know. And that is just the height, the height of arrogance. What I have seen, I've been here under Councillor Newman, Councillor Quirk and Councillor Shrinna. And Councillor Shrinna is probably the most arrogant of the three of those. And he withholds information. He sees it as his right to not give councillors information and do not give the public information. And people are not happy, and so they shouldn't. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise to report on the Infrastructure Committee report. And, Madam Chairman, I want to borrow a few words from Winston Churchill, if I may. Never in the field, and I do exercise some, let's call it poetry licence on this one, never in the field of public transport was so much owed by so many to so few. Madam Chairman, I'm obviously referring to the 40% uptake in the ferry report that Councillor Wines delivered last Tuesday. Interesting that the committee report did a deep dive into all the previous styles and configurations of the City Cat. And being someone who enjoys the sound of a good engine, especially a turbo, I decided to have a look. I asked the officers, well, what engine drives our City Cat fleet? And it was interesting to find out, Madam Chairman, that each City Cat has two turbo diesel engines, each being a six-cylinder straight engine, one on the port, one on the starboard side of the vessel, of course. So then I dived a little deeper and went in and had a look at, how much horsepower does these two engines deliver? Madam Chairman, the two engines deliver an equivalent of 1,400 horsepower. Now, if we compare that, if we compare that to, let's say, the greatest engine ever built by Rolls-Royce, the Merlin engine, it's roughly the same horsepower. And you can also draw parallels in each of the different configurations of the Spitfire, through all 15 different configurations. They used the same engine. And if we look at the styling of the Spitfire as one of the most beautiful planes ever crafted, we also see that same kind of beautiful styling in our City Cat. And as our City Cats change and evolve, the engine, the heart, the thing, the muscle that does all the hard work is remaining the same, very similar to a Spitfire aircraft. Madam Chairman, I have to say that there are a lot of parallels that can be drawn from a Spitfire and our City Cats. Both have popped up in pop culture. We've seen many films and stories about the Spitfire aircraft, but we've also seen the City Cat pop up in Bluey. It's a key feature in their show. We have seen a lot about the City Cat, even in the early days when it was first launched. You look at the original City Cat, the very first Type 1, and it has a hint of a Ferrari there. You can actually envisage Tom Selleck sitting in the front of the City Cat, hooning somewhere in his Ferrari. It has those same lines. But then after that one, when, Councillor Wines has got a very strange look on his face. Then when you go on to the next different versions of the City Cat, they take on their own styling. They become a thing of their own beauty. They become a machine that personifies Brisbane on the river, Madam Chairman. I have to admit, this committee presentation, through you to Councillor Wines, Madam Chairman, was possibly the best that we had in transport this session. I've done quite a few trips on the river now on the City Cat, and every time I go on board...
I'm really sorry, Councillor Toomey, as much as I would love to continue hearing this. Under the provisions of Section 3513 of the Meeting's Local Law, on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now have to put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll now put the Public Transport Committee to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. We'll now put the Infrastructure Committee to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put the City Planning Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. Seconded. Division called by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Gibney. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 21 in favour.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. Customer Services Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. Community and the Arts Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. And Finance and City Governance Committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, that is carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Huang.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the standing rules be suspended in order to move a motion that is not listed on the agenda.
Seconded. As it is a procedural motion, it's been moved by Councillor Huang, seconded by Councillor Dixon. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that as Councillor Johnston has four orders of unsuitable meeting conduct issued within the 12-month period at the council meetings on 5th November 2024, 19th November 2024, 19th August 2025 and 2nd September 2025, and as Section 2110 of the Meeting's Local Law requires that these matters must be dealt with at the next meeting of council, then council resolves to refer the matter to the Office of the Independent Assessor.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Huang and seconded by Councillor Dixon. As Councillor Johnson has four orders of unsuitable meeting conduct issued within a 12-month period at the council meetings on 5th of November 2024, 19th November 2024, 19th August 2025 and 2nd of September 2025, and as Section 2110 of the Meeting's Local Law requires that these matters must be dealt with at the next meeting of council, then council resolves to refer the matter to the Office of the Independent Assessor. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the third motion of this kind we have had to bring through the chamber in the last few weeks. This is disappointing, but unfortunately, the law leaves us little choice. We have an obligation to deal with these matters, and as we have said in these previous debates, we feel that the most appropriate way to do so is to refer this to the independent statutory authority. I will say, however, that in response to these motions, Councillor Johnston has complained she's not warned before an order of unsuitable meeting conduct. As you know, Madam Chair, there's no requirement that a councillor be warned or cautioned before you make an order of unsuitable meeting conduct. But I would say that it is usually the case that you provide Councillor Johnston with ample opportunity to correct her behaviour as a courtesy. Madam Chair, I review the minutes of last week's meeting, and it is a matter of record that, in fact, you did warn Councillor Johnston. On the 19th of August, you also warned Councillor Johnston before issuing the order. On the 19th of November, you warned Councillor Johnston about her conduct six times. And on the 5th of November, you warned all councillors about calling out during question time, which Councillor Johnston continued to do before you made your order. Madam Chair, I make this point because despite comments made by other councillors, which are false and disparaging towards you, you have always acted with fairness and integrity in this chamber. I will say no more about Councillor Johnston's behaviour. She has been here long enough to know what she has done is wrong, and I leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Councillor Huang. I didn't want to interrupt you, but Councillor Griffiths called out twice during the time that Councillor Huang was on his feet, and that was very inappropriate, and I ask you not to call out. Any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. This is clearly an abusive process, and I'm sure Councillor Wines will be very upset at that because he doesn't like perceived abuses of process. These items, matters before us have already been dealt with by this council. We are not required to continue to refer the same things off to the OIA. That is not in the Act. That's a choice that the LMP are making. And you have all, and I'm sure you participated in party room meetings, Chair, because you're not a very independent chair. I suspect you do get your instructions at a party level from the LMP, and not acting in an impartial way. There is nothing in the Act that says, once these items have been dealt with, that they need to be relitigated and dealt with each and every week. So I can only assume now that we're going to have the LMP bringing these motions right up until after the 19th of November 2025, if that's how they're going to continue to do it. And is that a great use of council resources? I don't know. The LMP seem much more animated about doing these kind of things than they do about actually coming up with solutions to the problems our city faces. The fact that we have seen the worst behaviour... Now, I accept that some of the warnings that I have received and conduct of which I have undertaken been noted in the minutes is entirely fair and justified. On some occasions, I'll concede that. And I'm sure other councillors on this side would as well. But the fact, if you look at how these meetings are chaired and how noting certain councillors' conduct in the minutes has been weaponised by you, Chair, compared to some of the behaviour we have seen from LMP councillors over the years, I have been called, I've been called a cheap skate scumbag by an LMP councillor. I've been called a groin rub by an LMP councillor. I've been called a piece of SHIT by an LMP councillor. Councillor Johnston was sworn at two weeks ago by Councillor Toomey, who shouted out "Bull SHIT" across the chamber. The fact that only ALP and independent, and the independent councillors' conduct is ever noted in the minutes, and none of that, none of that says that something is seriously wrong with how you're running these meetings. It's just objectively, if people looked at that and they went, okay, sure, you look at some of the things, and I admit that some of the things I've done should have been noted in the minutes and the warnings I should have received, but so should those things. It's not, I'll take that interject from Councillor Strunk. I get, it's not selective hearing. It's a deliberate political strategy that we're seeing unfold in here, unfortunately. I wish it was, Councillor Strunk. We used to make that joke sometimes that the acoustics were wrong, but it's actually a deliberate strategy, unfortunately. And the fact now that the LMP have made a decision, clearly that each week in, week out, they are going to continue to target an independent councillor who sits alone, use their majority to continue to target that councillor in this fashion. Now, that councillor, Councillor Johnston sure can engage in the rough and tumble of a meeting, but she doesn't have the ability to ruin an LMP councillor's life. Alone, she doesn't have the ability to ruin an LMP councillor's life. But they do. They have that ability. And you're aiding and abetting them in doing that, Chair. And it's really quite sick and disgusting what we're seeing unfold here and this continued targeting. So no, we won't be supporting this tonight.
Further speakers? Councillor...
Sorry, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Councillor Wines.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Look, just once again, I mean, once again, we're here...
Just one moment, Councillor Wines. I can't hear you over the noise. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Like, once again, we're here too.
Point of order, Councillor Griffiths.
Councillor Massey was on her feet, standing up while Councillor Wines was even considering whether it'd stand up. She had the call.
It's a longstanding protocol, which I...
You just ignored her.
Councillor Griffiths, stop debating me. And I caution you. And all councillors in this chamber have their own responsibility. You are responsible for your behaviour and what you do in here.
And you're responsible for fair chairing, and you're not doing it.
And councillor, I do consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct. And in accordance with Section 214 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, I hereby request you to stop interjecting, stop debating and calling out. you to stop interjecting, stop debating and calling out across the chamber. Everyone in this chamber knows that we go from side to side. And that has been the case with every chair. Councillor Huang.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that. That is exactly the way the rules work, the causement to alternate. Look, today, we are considering another one of these resolutions again. None of this appeals to me, this whole process. I've made that clear many, many times. I don't think we should do this. I don't think, I've said it many times in the past, we shouldn't allow for guilt by accusation. We shouldn't allow this council to be turned into a kangaroo court, but the rules...
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, would Councillor Huang take a question?
No, this is too serious for that sort of thing, Councillor Massey.
Councillor Huang.
So, the model meetings law speaks to the requirement that if there is a third or more order within 12-month period made against a councillor, an order issued, that these matters are dealt with at the next meeting of council and treated as suspected conduct breach pursuant to the Local Government Act of 2009. And that's all we're doing. And as I've said many times, we've come to this place, we follow these rules. We... Councillor Johnston is very quick to use these rules in this place to her advantage. But I believe that particularly these sorts of rules should be viewed neutrally. And I don't think these are an opportunity to attack any person. This is merely what has happened in the meeting, and it is a referral. It is a referral to a third party for their consideration in line with the requirements and the rules of this place. I certainly don't think it's fair, as Councillor Cassidy did, to use this as an opportunity to attack you, which is what just happened. As a review of Councillor Johnston's conduct, which she can take it to the line and go over quite a few times, I don't think people dispute that. But to use it as an opportunity to personally attack you, that wasn't right or fair, which is what Councillor Cassidy did. And I don't think that any of his comments were fair, quite frankly. And I don't think it was right of him to use this sort of platform to criticise you and your conduct. I think that Councillor Johnston having her name noted in the minutes is a modest consideration within the context of the events that occur in a council meeting. She's not been asked to leave. In fact, Chairlanders, I don't recall you ever asking... I'm struggling to recall any incidents where you've asked a councillor to leave the meeting. It may have happened, but I can't recall it. And I think that that is a favourable reflection upon you, that you have a very high tolerance for the conduct of councillors in this place, of all varieties. And that the fact that there have probably been instances where Councillor Johnston and others have earned a suspension from this place for the afternoon, and you have not done it, you have noted them in the minutes because it's right that all of us have an opportunity to speak in this place, to give our constituents and our residents a voice. And I think you do that. Once again, we see this resolution, which I have never changed my mind on this. This should be a private matter. We have raised, my understanding is this has been raised with the state government for alteration. I hope that this will change so that we don't have to do it in this manner, that if there is any concerns, they are dealt with privately, which is the way it should be, quite frankly. And this was changed by, I believe, former Premier Miles to make us do it this way. And I don't agree. And I would encourage councillors to review my comments, I don't think I've ever agreed. But it is where we find ourselves. And so as a result of that, I think that the proponent, Councillor Huang, puts this as the rules require. I think that it's fair that opposition or non-government figure is provided an opportunity to reply, but also it's important to remember that this is about a process that referring...
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Griffiths.
Is it possible to get some legal advice on this? Because I've got information that you, once three have been dealt with, that's it. You can't then keep renominating them from the OIA. So I've, you know, I've been given that advice from the OIA.
I'm sure that you can... I don't uphold that point of order. If you want to go down that avenue, there are other avenues that you can take to get legal advice yourself. Councillor Huang.
Point of order. My understanding is the OIA have provided information to say that once you've been given three warnings, they can be referred off, which Councillor Johnston was last week. But then you have to get another three warnings before you go through this process again, which is not what we're doing now.
Councillor Huang...
What we're doing is victimising this councillor and bullying her.
Thank you. I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Huang.
Can I ask Councillor Griffiths to table that information? If he has it, I'd be interested to see it.
I'm waiting, point of order, I'm waiting for the information to arrive, but that's the information I've been told.
Councillor Huang.
At this point, I will proceed in a normal fashion until alternative advice is provided. But I do not accept that this is anything personal to do with Councillor Johnston, but it is something that we need to do within the rules. My preference would be to not do it that way. I think it's important we refer this to third-party consideration, and as a result, I move that this be put.
Seconded. Has been moved by Councillor Huang that this be put and seconded by Councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division called by Councillor Massey and seconded by Councillor Chong Wah. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and 6 against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
Can I just seek a ruling? Whose obligation is it to ensure that a motion is competent and legal? Is it the councillor that is moving the motion? Or what role do you play as Chair in that?
That is mine, councillor.
So, point of order.
We'll move to Councillor Huang to sum up, please.
Point of order.
Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
Have you sought legal advice? And are you satisfied that this is a legal and competent motion?
I am satisfied that it is a legal and competent motion. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, it is our statutory obligation to make this referral under the Meeting's local law. And can I say thanks to Sri Lanka Council's transparency that we've got recording of the council meetings every week? Councillor Johnston's behaviour is self-evident, and I'm sure that, you know, we are just here to fulfil our duties and to make that referral to the Independent Assessor to make that decision. So I urge all councillors to deliver your statutory obligation. Thank you.
We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division called by Councillor Cassidy and seconded by Councillor Chong Wah. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and 6 against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we'll now move to general business. Any speakers? Councillor Gibney.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about three amazing community events that have been happening in our ward. So the Gold Star and Little Star Reading Programme Award Ceremony, the Winham Manly Jazz Festival, and of course, the Bayside Spring Festival. First of all, last week, I was very lucky to attend the Winham Library's award ceremony. I want to just thank publicly Jamie, Sally and the team at the Winham Library. They do such a wonderful little presentation there. I did wear my Cat in the Hat earrings, which are very important, of course, for any book-related activities. And there were some readers as young as one who got their certificate, so that was a really special afternoon. So thank you very much to the Winham Library for putting on that really gorgeous little ceremony. I also want to have a quick thanks to Paul Jones with Emma and Nicole from the Queensland Heritage Band Association for taking on the Winham Manly Jazz Festival. Sadly, earlier this year, we lost Gloria Davie, who had been running this festival for decades. And she would be very happy that her legacy has lived on with such a successful day on Sunday. Families came from all over the Bayside and wider to celebrate Father's Day by the Bay, under the beautiful sunshine. And we had several bands that played. We had the Queensland Show Band, we had the Royal Australian Navy Band, we had the Andrew Sisters Tribute Band, we had Desi D and the Stingrays, with the Galapagos Ducks, with the Empire Swing Team also making an appearance with their dancing. I just want to thank the Lord Mayor's Community Fund and Brisbane City Council for sponsoring this event, because it was a really fabulous day out for our community. Finally, we are very excited that since 2011, the Bayside Spring Festival has not happened, and we are bringing it back bigger than ever this year. We're starting it on Friday evening, and we've partnered with Brisbane Festival. They're bringing Manly Serenades out with a afternoon of country music. So we're featuring Rachel Farm, Midwest Molly and Brianna Dinsdale. And we're really looking forward to also having rides and all sorts of activities happening on the Friday night. On Saturday, we're moving to a community focus. We have community groups throughout the area and bands who will be joining us, including the Royal Australian Navy Band, Daryl Murphy with Phoenix, the Charlotte Street Jazz Band, Locals the Cunens, who are a father and daughter duo, Cody Miller, as well as the Morton Bay Colliers Band, Winham State High School, Bayside Dance, Callaher Dance Academy and the Bayside Youth Band, as well as the Queensland Services Heritage Band Association. Thanks again to Paul Jones, who's done backing up the weekends with another stage performance and looking after everything for our event. If anyone wants to join us, everybody in the chamber is welcome to come down. We're hoping we get fabulous weather. And yes, we have emcee is Ranger Stacy. Some of us of a certain era will know exactly who Ranger Stacy is. She's a local. We're going to have a bar as well, and animal displays, and petting zoos, and the fire truck, lots of things. And fireworks, which is probably the most exciting thing. I just want to publicly thank our committee members, because obviously, these community events don't happen without partnerships and without committee members. So I'd like to go on the record to thank two of the grandfathers of the Spring Festival, and that is Barry Mite and Paul Jones. They'll both claim that they own it, but they do both co-own it. Kylie Carson, Deo Finlayson, who is a former queen of the festival, Steve Rickett, Abigail Graham, Ingrid Flanagan, Jeanette Mitchell, sorry, Mandy Callaher, Bernie Nayland, Donna Duggan, Ella Jackson, Eliza Connor, Jo Goodison and Victoria Matthews. And I can't go without thanking my ward team as well, because they've had to pick up a lot of the work with this event. So Tony, Lisa and Simone, thank you very much for all that you've done for this event. We really look forward to it being fantastic. Thanks.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak about the Liberal Party's unfortunate relationship with racism. Liberal Senator Jacinta Nampajimpa Price's appalling comments this week attacking the motives and contributions of Australians of Indian origin should be called out. To suggest that Indian people are being shipped into Australia by the federal government for political purposes is so dehumanising of the lived experiences of those people and the genuine contribution that they make to modern Australia. These comments came just a week after people of Indian origin were targeted by the organisers of those ghastly marches. I saw degrading comments, including participants saying, "You shouldn't be welcomed in Australia just because you can drive an Uber." Disgusting. And when you see Liberal Party senators backing in these attacks against Australians of Indian origin, it's absolutely incredible. And instead of an apology from that Liberal senator, we have just seen Liberal Party infighting and more name-calling. And even when the Liberal leader was pressed about this issue on the weekend, we still saw no apology. I have a Sikh gudwara and a Hindu temple in my ward. I have always been struck by how open and welcoming and warm those communities have been to all people, sharing their cultures with us all in good times and in bad times. Some of the first people out on the streets offering support in times of disaster are members of these communities. And I say to those communities of Australians with Indian heritage, I stand with you, I support you, and you are more than welcome in my Brisbane.
Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on two matters. The first is the 50th anniversary of the Brisbane Organic Growers, and the other is a report on a recent conference that I attended. Firstly, can I congratulate the Brisbane Organic Growers on turning 50 at their 39th... They had their 39th Organic Food Show at Albion, at the Albion Peace Hall at Windsor, and they presented me with this, small organic pineapple, which I have kept. And I appreciate the gift of that, and it does smell excellent, and it's part of a local agricultural produce that they make, both locally there and across Brisbane. And I recognise them and their commitment to growing things in our city, and congratulate them on one more fantastic fare. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the Guangzhou International Public Transport Expo, focusing on new energy and digital technology, and the 23rd UITP Asia-Pacific Divisional Meeting. The UITP is an organisation we've been involved with some time. They've, in the past, recognised us, in particular our metro vehicle, as being a world-leading vehicle. And I was invited to present at that conference as their guest to talk about the virtues and values of our metro system. And quite frankly, as the title would suggest, it was a green technology exhibition. The fact that we have a wholly electric, emission-free operational vehicle that operates carrying thousands of people every day was extremely well-received and extremely valuable. They were very interested in the actual mechanics of getting a wholly electric vehicle operational, not only from prototype, but into active use. And I thank the people, the organisers of those events, and the people, particularly the Guangzhou Public Transport Authority, for their keen interest. They have a very keen focus on battery technology. So some of the technical visits saw an opportunity to see how they're reconditioning batteries. As hopefully most councillors would know, a major issue with electric vehicles is battery life and battery disposal. And so they are working, their engineers are working quite heavily on reconditioning those batteries to get more life out of them, something that we here should spend a great deal of interest on. And there's that there. And as you can see, only an hour and a half down the road, there is the BYD factory. Now, BYD is an increasingly popular brand in the city. It's at Senjen, and Senjen is a sister city. And apologies for my photograph, here's a better one. Here's yours truly standing next to of the facility they use for training people to be the mechanics on the electric engines for BYD vehicles. So you see, here was an opportunity for us to talk about the achievements we've made, but also achievements that they are trying to do in the field of green energy and electrified motor vehicles. So, as I say, BYD, an increasingly popular brand here, produced by a sister city, environmentally sound. But I must stop and stress that one of the main reasons I was invited to attend as a guest of the union was to talk about the values and virtues of our metro vehicle and our system. And so it was to great satisfaction of mine when I saw the Minister for Transport of Sarawak, which is in Malaysia, talk about their vehicle. Now, they've got a new vehicle. Now, I'm not sure if you can quite see that, so I've got a better photograph of it for you. It is a, what they would call a trackless tram, a rubber-tired hydrogen-powered trackless tram. Now, I would like to draw you... Now, I would like to draw your attention, Madam Chair, to the rubber tyre being disguised by the frame of the vehicle. This has been a contentious point here, but in Malaysia, they call that a trackless tram, and they have no issue using or seeing, seeing a vehicle using rubber tyres as a tram. And they marvelled at our vehicle, but that we were able to pull off something just as good with a electric, felt-o-votake electric battery. Now, this is what I would say to all those people who, who argue about whether a vehicle with rubber tyres, it's a bus or a tram or something in between, trolley car without wires, the truth is, it's what's, it is the dominant new technology. It can be rolled out cheaply and effectively across a whole range of jurisdictions. What I would say to people is that the rubber tyre is a revolution being adopted by other countries, and we should be proud that it was developed by our council for our people, and it's in total operation. In other countries, they marvel at it and copy our technology. So what I would say to anybody who, is to stop being out of date, get on board with the new technology taking over public transport.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on one item today, and that is about a bank. And people are probably saying, 'Bank? Why are you going to speak about a bank?' You know, those are the things that we like to kick every time they put the interest rates up or the mortgage rates up. But we have a bank in, in Forest Lake, which is called a community bank, and it's called Heritage. And they'll, they'll be rebranding, well, they have rebranded themselves, but it'll be people-first, when, once they make the full transition. Anyways, I, I rise to speak about it because this, this bank, this community bank, all the profits that they make, half of, all the profits that they actually make, say, over a year, right? They pay all the bills, and whatever's left, they divide in half and donate that through, through, through various submissions and grants to community groups and organisations. We're so blessed to actually have this bank, and it's been going for over 15 years now. And they've donated something like $2 million over that time, a considerable, considerable amount of money to, to community groups and organisations. So many of the community groups wouldn't be able to sustain themselves in, with one-off purchases, right, if it wasn't the, it wasn't the Heritage Bank that was helping it along. There are, 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 our community festival coming up, what we used to call the Spring Festival, it's now called the Forest Lake Festival coming up, and, and then the carols at the end of the year wouldn't, would not be, probably wouldn't go ahead without the support of the Heritage Bank. Because they, they're, they've got deep pockets for that type of community event, and they really, really back it in. So I just wanted to pay tribute to them for all the work they do in regards to community events. But there's a lot of other cultural groups that come in and, and use our facilities, right, whether it be at the college, or whether it be at Lighthouse. And those community groups, those mostly cultural groups, right, again, benefit from the Heritage Bank, backing them in for those events that they, that they undertake from time to time as well. And I know, I know Councillor Kim, some of the groups that she looks after, right, or that we share, right, benefit from this bank called the Heritage Bank. And I, and I just, I just wanted to get up and, I mean, I talk about a lot of community groups and organisations, but the one that actually underpins a lot of that, right, is, is the Heritage Bank, the community bank. And if you ever get the opportunity to get one in your area and start fundraising for, for it, right, there's a lot, there's a bit of a process, but it's definitely worth undertaking because you'll benefit greatly, after a few years of accumulation and, and, and growth in the bank, you'll benefit greatly from what they're able to do within your own community. It certainly helps, those funds that we get from the Lord Mayor, it certainly helps stretch those considerably. And, and, and I know there's another bank that does the same sort of work as well, but I just wanted to talk about Heritage and what great work they've done in my community for the last 15 years plus. And I, we, we are so appreciative of, of the continuing support that they show, and will continue to show after the amalgamation with people, people first. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, look, I rise just to talk very quickly about something, and that is the Kangaroo Point Bridge. And what we talk about often with the Kangaroo Point Bridge is that it's award-winning, and it has delivered a really important walking and cycling route to get across the river, a bridge that connects us, and it's, it's certainly reinvigorated that entire area. But I don't think we've ever thought of it as a piece of art, and I don't think we've ever thought about it as something that would be seen around the world and shared millions and millions of times. And indeed, the work, the artwork by Craig and Carl, who are Brizzy Boys, who now have hit it big and are living in New York, have turned this brand-new bridge into a cultural icon. And I think we can all agree that it looks beautiful, and it's done amazing things for our city, and it will continue to do amazing things for our city throughout Brisbane Festival. And can I also just give a big shout-out, I know this is Councillor Howard's area, but the Brisbane Festival, wow, what a way to celebrate our city. What a bold and beautiful city we live in. I am so proud. I'm also very proud of the many, many people, hard-working engineers and all sorts that work in the infrastructure division. And one of them has written a poem about the Kangaroo Point Bridge, particularly since it has been lit up and is being celebrated so widely across our city. So Monique Collison is her name, and she's a project manager in TAO, and I want to share her poem with everybody in this place. It's called 'Rays of Light'. Kangaroo Point Bridge lit up, what an amazing and stunning scene. As you walk along the river, your heart will skip a beat. Rays of light that evoke happiness as you feel the calm and dream, dream of wonderful moments in life that match this beautiful scene. The stillness of the night brings a reflection of serenity and peace, beautiful colours that bring joy as you smile and gently breathe. The Kangaroo Point River Walkway with its many beautiful gifts. Take a walk and enjoy the many sights Brisbane has to give. Enjoy the inflatable artwork, one of Brisbane Festival's crowning gems, archways across the bridge, amazing photos with family and friends. Let your imagination take a journey as you enjoy this beautiful gift. May your heart be filled with laughter and happiness as it's given a wonderful lift. Thank you, Monique. That was wonderful.
Further speakers, Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on two items today in relation to ICB and a few events that have happened in our ward over the past few months. Firstly, I would like to reference the comments from the Lord Mayor this morning, and just say that it's very nice to see that all sides of the chamber are in support of making sure that the safety of our community comes first, no matter what happens, regardless of where anyone is from. Islamic College of Brisbane is in my ward, I'm in Carrawatha, and they're a very great school with wonderful students. So it was very disheartening to see what happened with a bomb threat over there at the school, and we were very, very concerned on the day that it happened. But I'd just like to put my remarks out there that we're here to support the community no matter what, and it comes from all sides of this chamber as well. So thank you to the Lord Mayor for speaking about that today. Secondly, with a few big events that have happened in our area, we've had our Polara Pop-Up Library, a little, little Gold Star Reading Programme, and with our awards just last week, we had a wonderful time there. And I wanted to thank Matt and Penny, the librarians, who come down every time. They do a really great job, and I know lots of families who love them. They even spent hours and hours at one of our Book Week events that we held at Parkinson Lakes, just singing and reading to all the families, they were just doing rounds again and again all day. So they do a really great job, and I know families come just for them as well. So thank you so much for everything that they do and for the organisation. I'll be there to support the programme no matter what. Secondly, we've had quite a few local school fates that have happened. We've had Alchester State School Multifest and the St Stephen's Fete as well in Alchester. Just wanted to thank Paul, Simone, Principal Leach and other community groups such as Volunteer Connect. They've been there nearly every single event that we do, as well as ERC Electrical Group, they've been out there running the, the bar for the parents. There's also Natasha John and the PNF from St Stephen's as well. And next, we also had our UN Youth EBIT Finals competition. Just wanted to thank the Chair of Council, Councillor Landis, for granting the approval to allow a bunch of very enthusiastic international relations and model UN fans to debate in the chamber here just, just a couple of days ago. So it was a wonderful day just to see that happen. It's a, it's a statewide competition, and then it goes national after if you make the top five. So congratulations to everyone that's participated in the programme and the many facilitators, mostly who are university students who run this programme. It's a all-volunteer and non-profit organisation, so it was great to see support from all sides of the chamber. As a former participant myself, I can say it's a wonderful programme, and I'll continue to support that too. And finally, I just wanted to also thank Councillor Hutton for her recent support. We actually did a painting of the bollards at the Matthew Arnold Memorial Park. This was a community event. Originally, it was a bit hard to get the approval for that because they were old bollards that were all around the park, so we got that troubleshooted after we sent an email through to Councillor Hutton. Thanks to Volunteer Connect, who are their public liability insurance as well, we were able to do the stay, they organised everyone down there. There was Callum Bell Leopards that came, there was also the Scouts too, and a bunch of different community groups that came all together just to help out, and also the Arnolds who came along. We will continue to keep making progress and make sure that this park continues to be in a great shape. And it was really lovely to see the whole community come out to support a park like this, and also the tragic events that happened many years ago, and continue unfortunately across Australia. So it was wonderful to see the efforts of, beyond politics, to come together to do an initiative like this. Really, it was, we just painted the bollards a new colour of brown, but it makes a really big difference when you drive past the park. We've also used suburban enhancement funding as well to put a few hooks on the wall for the memorial later this year, when the police memorial happens. So thank you to all the councillors for supporting an issue like this and an event like this as well. Hope to keep working together to achieve great outcomes for our community.
Further speakers? Is there no further speakers? That now brings the meeting to a closure. Thank you, councillors.